We've got some proclamation, so Bud Cox, can you come up?
Sure.
We're here to rely on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a heart and a soul. We've got some proclamations, so Bud Cox, can you come up?
Sure.
Well, one of the things that we should celebrate here in Manhattan is the success and the energy of our small businesses. And we have a specific ask. We have Small Business Saturday, but we ought to be having Small Business Sunday, Monday, all the way through the week.
Every day.
And as you know, particularly here in the holiday season, a lot of our small businesses depend on this time of year to really make a difference in, so they can keep people hired and make sure their business continues to grow. And they are real engines in this community. I mean, this is where a lot of the hiring takes place. A lot of people are supported across Manhattan by our small businesses. So we want a proclamation to recognize what they do and would ask that you honor this idea of shopping small and staying around Manhattan to do so. So if you'll read the proclamation.
Whereas the small, locally-owned businesses of Manhattan are vital to our city's economic health and contribute to our unique and vibrant community character, for every $100 spent by a small, local retailer, $68 will return to the community through taxes, payroll, and donations to local schools and charities. Public awareness of the contributions made by Manhattan local businesses are the key to sustaining a healthy business climate, and the people of Manhattan are grateful to the small, locally-owned businesses of Manhattan for their generous contribution to the quality of life we all enjoy. We join American Express, the U.S. Chamber, and other local chambers of commerce in supporting America's locally-owned small businesses. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Dotson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Manhattan and urge all residents to join the rest of America and do a portion of their holiday shopping at small, locally-owned businesses.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, it's such an honor to be here, and I'll just say this about small business in Manhattan. Small business drew me here to Manhattan back in the early 80s and eventually my brother, too. And for what it's worth, we cook, and I think we've blessed this community with some pretty good cooking. But it's such a rare thing. Manhattan has got great restaurants, better than any for the size of town. We've got so many really neat retail outlets that are independent, and we're truly blessed, you know? We're very unique. People come from all over the country to eat our food and to buy our products, and we're proud. And I thank you guys, this is awesome. The small business community is going to continue to grow in Manhattan, and we're excited about it with MBAF coming in and everything. The sky's the limit, so we love it. We thank you guys so much, and thank you for this proclamation. All right.
So Belinda, can you come up and bring whoever you like? Because I know it's a big team effort. You're coming, too, Jerry? All right. Oh, that's your own photographer. How you doing?
Joey Athan.
Joey, good to have you here. So this is about the Festival of Lights. And, you know, if you would have come to Manhattan just a few years ago, you would see a completely different Manhattan. Building the downtown and then having the people that have contributed to making our, particularly our Blue Earth Plaza area and beyond, a great Christmas destination is just remarkable. One of the things that all of us on the commission and the volunteers and the donors downtown have tried to do is make sure that Manhattan is a holiday destination for everybody. So when you come to Manhattan, we'll have the tree on the 29th of November, then we'll go to the parade on the 6th of December, and we're going to have all kinds of events every weekend and beyond. So you should be down there for this first opening on the 29th. It's a great occasion. We've done a little change down there, but it's going to be even better. Got one of the greatest trees in the nation, one of the greatest parades in the nation. So what more could you ask for over the holidays, other than a little bit of warm weather? So if you'll publish a proclamation.
Whereas the Manhattan Festival of Lights is a unique celebration of the holiday season, and this year is the seventh annual event, and it will take place at the Blue Earth Plaza next to the Flint Hills Discovery Center, with the opening ceremonies begin at 7:00 PM on Friday, November 29th, 2019. This is a magical time to enjoy the Wonderland of Lights, choreographed to holiday classics, sip hot chocolate fireside with family and friends, and enjoy shopping and dining opportunities in our community. The lighting of the tallest holiday tree in Kansas can be enjoyed for all to see, for it was Whoville and the generous donors who made it all come to be. This event came to change the Grinch in a small selfish heart, and the Festival of Lights has grown with love, and that's just the start. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Dotson, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, does hereby declare November 29th, 2019, through January 1st, 2020, as Festival of Lights event in the City of Manhattan, Kansas, and encourage all citizens and community members throughout the region and the state of Kansas to enjoy the brilliant light displays and family fun activities.
All right.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the community who has generously supported this. It started with an idea from four or five businessmen, and it's grown into an incredible event. But I'm going to defer to Joey Athan, because I came into this a couple of years later than when it started, but she's kind of the glue that holds us all together and keeps us in line. So I'm going to let her talk about this just a little more. Thank you.
Well, it's a large group effort, and none of us could do it without the others. But I know that the original founding members of Whoville are very thankful that Manhattan has embraced this event so much in attendance and support and traditions and financially, because it takes quite a bit to put this on every year. So every year, the donors and the sponsors come together and support us so that we can not only put it on, but we improve it and maintain it from year to year. So I think that's about it. I think they're just very thankful, and we'll just keep doing it.
I don't know if we know yet how Santa Claus is going to drop in this time. Is he coming in by helicopter?
I just wanted to, you know, highlight, on the Festival of Lights, of course, a great event, but there's numerous other things that happen in the city. And one that I've always found fascinating the past few years is on December 7th, Saturday this year, at 9:00 AM, there'll be the, you know, annual Christmas tree harvest of the red cedars that are out in Roger Schultz Community Park. And you can go out there with your handsaw and cut one down, take it as a Christmas tree, and Parks and Rec has done that for the past two, three years. It's a really, really great event, and the tree's free, you don't have to pay for it, and it does a service to Parks and Rec, because we've got too many of those out there, and so we need to thin them. And I tell you, there's some real photographic moments there, when you look at all the families coming to take those, and there's hot chocolate, and there's donuts, and there's rides and things of that nature. So hopefully it'll be nice weather, as the mayor says, but Saturday, December 7th, you should go out and, even if you don't want a tree, just stop by there, because it's a great event.
Yeah, I just wanted to say tomorrow is the 150th anniversary for the transcontinental railroad completion, and the Union Pacific Big Boy Steam Locomotive will be here in Manhattan. They're going to be traveling all over Kansas, but in Manhattan from 9:30 to 10:15 at South Manhattan Avenue. I think there's going to probably be a big crowd. I know several commissioners are going to be there as well. I don't know if there's been much publicity about it, but I think that's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, at least during this time for us. So hopefully, everybody goes out and takes advantage of the train in town. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, when, you know, I said it jokingly, but on Veterans Day, it was cold. And if you didn't know anything about Manhattan, you would learn something about it on Veterans Day. When we turned the corner down from going from by the mall onto Points Avenue, the numbers of people that were standing outside, and it's like 23 degrees with 15 miles an hour wind, the numbers of people and little kids standing out there would just warm your heart. So, you know, unfortunately, old engine number one wouldn't start. I mean, I think it knew how cold it was, and so we got an engine number two. And we thanked the fire department for being flexible on that, and we went down, but we were sheltered a little bit, which was great in the long run. But seeing all those people who were willing to brave the cold and still waved to all the participants in the parade and show support to veterans was really heartwarming. So thanks very much to everyone. The next item is Consent Agenda. These are items that are either administrative in nature or items that have been previously considered by the commission. There's one item that has been amended, and that's Item K, which is Water and Sewer Master Plan Update. What we needed to do is ask a commissioner to sit on that selection committee, and Commissioner Butler has volunteered to do that. So that's the only thing that was missing from any notes that you might have on the consent agenda. So at this time, I'd just ask if there's any comments on the consent agenda?
My only comment is, I, tonight, am going to be voting no on Item D, not because I'm not supportive of the conference center expansion, but shortly after the election, when sales tax did not pass, I had sent an email to the city manager to say I didn't feel comfortable voting on any large allocations of money until we put all of the projects down on a piece of paper and compared their priorities to one another, because we're not going to have enough money to do everything. There seems to be a desire to do that, but it'll be after the new commission is seated. So in my mind, transient guest tax is just as much up for grabs as property tax and sales tax are, so I'll be voting no on Item D.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, we'll go to the public and ask for public comment on anything on the consent agenda. So anyone having a comment on any item on the consent agenda, please come forward. I'd like to hear from you. All right, seeing no one, we'll come back to the commission, ask for a motion.
I move we accept the consent agenda. Second?
Call the rule, please.
Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Riki?
Yes, on all but Item D, no.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of Item D, which carries four to one.
Thank you. Now go to Section 5, which is a public hearing. This is to consider vacating a utility easement near the College Hill Early Learning Center to be presented by Rob Ott. So at this point, a public hearing is now open.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Rob Ott, Director of Public Works. We have a request from the school district to vacate a five-foot-wide utility easement that has no public or private utilities, such as West Ark Kansas Gas or AT&amp;T. None of them are located. All of them have signed off on the easement. It runs north-south on the property, and there's no benefit to us. We don't need it, and neither do any of the utility companies that would have rights to be in there. Hence, our recommendation is to vacate it. This public hearing is required by state law to vacate it per the state law. We've received requests that everyone sign off on it. It's been advertised in local paper, and hence, we're here this evening to see if there's any objections. Kimball Avenue, Hillview, this is where the College Hill preschool is. The vacation is a five-foot-wide utility easement, like I said, that runs north-south in this hatching area, and no objections from anyone. This map is extremely difficult to read. And I'll tell you again, this blue area is exactly what I just showed you previously. There is another existing utility easement. It's going to remain. It's the one that's in the purple here. And with that, city administration recommends that the commission conduct a public hearing, which you all are doing, make findings that there are no private rights that will be injured, endangered by such vacation, that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby, and approve the first reading of an ordinance vacating this five-foot utility easement. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rob. So at this point, any public comment on this as part of the hearings? So I'd ask you at this point to come forward and let us hear from you on this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to the commission and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by such vacation, and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience thereby, and approve the first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of the public utility easement of Lot 16 Hillview traffic.
Second. Call the rule, please.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Riki?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Now go to Item 6, which is the general agenda. And Item A is to consider an ordinance number 7465, and this is commuting, this is combining smoking and e-cigarette ordinances, and the presenter is Jared Wassinger, Assistant to the City Manager. Ah, there he is. You probably weren't anticipating or moving with this kind of speed, were you?
Impressive, man. Wow. Let me just pull up my PowerPoint real quick.
For everyone in the audience, if you don't know, we have donuts and things in the back, so that's probably where you are.
Sorry, just getting a quick bite, real quick. Well, hey, my name's Jared Wassinger. This is to the city manager. We're going to talk about the second reading for the combined smoking and e-cigarette ordinance. Typically, second readings are on the consent agenda, but there's been some comments from members of the public to revisit some provisions within the ordinance that was adopted by the city commission during the first reading, during the November 5th city commission meeting. So we're going to go through a similar PowerPoint that I did a couple of weeks ago, go over some history, but then really talk about some of those points that folks wanted to address. Again, in 2008, the citizen, through the citizen referendum process, voters put on the ballot an ordinance that would prohibit smoking in public places and places of employment, and that passed by the voters, and per the state statute, couldn't be amended for 10 years. So we've now reached that point as of January 2019. In 2016, the city commission wanted to address e-cigarettes, so we adopted a similar ordinance that, for the most part, mirrored the no-smoking ordinance that passed in 2008, and that passed in 2016. And as of January 2019, the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition requested the city commission take a look at those two ordinances and combine them. The 2008 ordinance that was passed by citizens was also written by citizens, so there were some legal ambiguities, some just difficult ways to read the ordinance and enforce it adequately, so they wanted to clean some of those things up, as well as combine the two ordinance so that they were treated identically. We had a public stakeholder meeting on September 26th. We invited many stakeholders from the public, Flint Hills Wellness Coalition, RCPD, the school district. We have multiple e-cigarette and tobacco stores in the community, so we invited those members. We invited the Chamber of Commerce and CBB, as well as downtown in Aggieville and Kansas State University, and then Riley County and Potawatomi County Commissioners. And then we also publicized that on our social media outlets. So at that public meeting, we reviewed a draft of the ordinance that was also reviewed during a work session that was held in October. The city commissioners provided feedback on that. There wasn't a majority of commissioners that wanted any changes within any certain provisions, so we basically came back for first reading on November 5th, and they considered that same draft ordinance, which passed, I believe, four to one or three to two. But here's going to be an overview of the ordinance and kind of what it all entails, but generally, it prohibits smoking in enclosed areas. That's public places, places of employment. There's many lists there, and that's generally your indoor buildings. That's going to stay the same as it has since 2008 and 2016 with the e-cigarette ordinance. We're going to talk about non-enclosed areas at the end, because that was one of the areas that was kind of up for debate, so I'm going to jump to parks and trails. There was a lot of ambiguity in the 2008 ordinance about how and where smoking could occur with bleachers, you know, the public parks, public trails, where there's a lot of people gathering. One of the recommendations from the Wellness Coalition was to, you know, clean that up so it's easy to enforce for spectators and visitors at these parks. We brought that to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they recommended a full prohibition of smoking and vaping throughout all city park and recreation trail properties. So that is reflected in the ordinance. The 2008 ordinance essentially mirrors the state law that requires that you need to post a sign on your business or place of employment, that smoking is not allowed. In 2016, we did not include a similar provision for e-cigarettes, but since, you know, that three-year time period, there has been some complaints about that, you know, putting that posting not being there and, you know, customers not understanding that there is an e-cigarette ordinance in place. Now that we're combining the two ordinance, we really do need to treat them the same, so we recommended, you know, you have to at least keep your no-smoking sign. You can add a no-e-cigarette or vaping sign, or you could remove that and add one that accomplishes both. So that'll be required of all proprietors to post those no-smoking and no-vaping signals at their establishments. Fines, the current ordinance that's in place that was adopted in 2008 was adopted before the State Indoor Clean Air Act in 2010, so our current ordinances, as it relates to fines for violations of the ordinance, doesn't necessarily reflect the state law. So we wanted to update that when we combined it. Also, in our current ordinance, there's differences in fines for a user in an establishment who would be smoking or vaping, as well as a proprietor who allows smoking or vaping to occur. With the state law, that's the same for both. After a first, second, or third violation within a year, you can see that on the right, so we mirrored the state law there. Retail tobacco and e-cigarette stores, back in 2008, there was at least one retail tobacco store in existence. The ordinance that passed by the citizens prohibited smoking in retail tobacco stores, which is why in Manhattan, you don't see smoke shops where you can smoke inside, or hookah shops, or things of that nature. But you can't, the state does not prohibit that, so you can see that in other cities in Kansas. In 2016, we were in a little bit different circumstances. We had at least three e-cigarette stores at that time who were allowing vaping to occur in their stores, and at the time, a majority of the city commissioners wanted to continue to allow vaping within those stores. So that was actually exempted in the 2016 ordinance. Jumping forward to today, when we combined them, we really wanted to treat them equally, so it was a question of whether to not allow smoking or vaping within retail stores or to allow them in both. And a majority of the commission was in favor of prohibiting them in retail tobacco and retail vaping stores. So that is reflected in the ordinance that was passed at first reading as well. Jumping to non-enclosed areas, which has come up recently after the first reading has passed, the ordinance that was passed at first reading prohibits smoking within 20 feet of any access point of a building or facility, so that could be a doorway or a window. The 2008 ordinance only said 20 feet from an entrance. The access point is consistent with the state law, so there was some ambiguity there that we cleaned up. Areas of food establishments, such as patios and outdoor dining, that would be prohibited within the ordinance that was passed at first reading. And then we have a couple of lists of other areas where we get into some, you know, disagreement or, you know, questions from the public is related to that food service establishment in the outdoor patio or outdoor dining area that's connected to those, that food establishment and that license premise. We talk about license premise in the ordinance, and that generally means a drinking or establishment that serves alcohol. In 2009, within the ordinance that was passed by the voters, it did list that food service establishments and licensed premises, including areas of food service establishments, you know, that are licensed, that are not enclosed, such as patios and outdoor dining, that it would be an example of a public place where smoking is prohibited. Within the same ordinance, they define public place, and the 2009 ordinance defined public place as an enclosed area. So there is, you know, a kind of a nuance from the legal language, and you couldn't enforce that list of examples in the way that it was written.
But to be clear, on the ballot that voters voted on, it listed patios, outdoor dining areas, and courtyards. So when I went to vote, I saw that in the question.
It would have been, I believe you saw the whole, possibly the whole question of the ordinance when they voted, but yes, the ordinance did list, it had a long list of these areas, smoking is prohibited. It listed things like retail tobacco stores, hotel rooms, all these things, and it also listed that area in quotations that I've listed up there. So you could, you know, imply that a voter would think that patios and outdoor dining would have been prohibited in that circumstance. Because of the nuances of the way it was written, it's not actually, it wasn't enforceable that way. So the only way you could enforce patios for the last 10 years that this ordinance has been in place is through that 20 feet from any entrance provision that was in the 2008 ordinance. So right now, when you're at an outdoor dining area, the rule of enforcement that has been used is that you can't smoke 20 feet from any entrance if you're in one of those outdoor, non-enclosed patios or outdoor dining areas.
So I want to just tie that to state law while we're on that topic, and state law says you can smoke on patios, but there's a 10-foot rule?
So the state law, and I'll address that here in a bit, but the, so the state law has a 10-foot from any access point rule. That's the minimum standard that all cities have to comply with. In 2008, the ordinance that was passed by citizens actually increased that to 20 feet, and that was the entrance that was used, but we're clearing that up to use access point now. So there's a couple of options that commissioners can do for the second reading, and they could maintain the prohibition on smoking and vaping in patios and outdoor dining areas as it was drafted and passed in the first reading. You could remove that and not prohibit smoking and vaping on patios, and then you would do what we've been doing for the last 10 years, which is defer to that 20-foot rule. It'd be 20 feet from any access point, as opposed to any entrance, but that is what would be, that was what, that is how you would enforce smoking and vaping on patios. You could also remove the prohibition on patios, but then change the ordinance to mirror the state law and use the 10-foot rule from any access point. 20 feet, you know, there are a lot of maybe outdoor patios out there that are smaller than 20 feet, so in effect, if you kept it how the, the way it is, it would essentially be prohibited in an outdoor patio if it wasn't... be prohibited in an outdoor patio if it wasn't, if it was less than 20 feet in diameter from that entrance.
Jared, on option two, so if I'm reading this right, smoking would only be banned on patios where dining was occurring?
It would be on an outdoor patio, courtyard, or outdoor dining area that was connected, non-enclosed, to a food establishment or a licensed premise.
I, oh, sorry. Okay, those bullet points for a second confused me, but I understand now. My apologies.
I do want to point out another nuance that was brought up with this provision as it's written currently. Golf courses can be licensed premises. Certain golf courses can have their entire golf course be a licensed premise where they serve alcohol. We do have at least one of those within city limits. So if you are effectively prohibiting smoking on these licensed premises, of these patios or outdoor dining areas, technically, through the way the ordinance is written, you would actually be banning smoking or vaping throughout that entire golf course if it was a licensed premise. I've talked to the two golf courses within the city limits, and currently, they do allow smoking and vaping along their courses. So the city commission would, if they're going to continue the, how it was passed at first reading, which prohibits it on patios and outdoor dining areas, you would maybe want to consider exempting golf courses, and that would be a discussion for the city commission to have. If you remove this patio, outdoor dining provision, this golf course item really doesn't need to be addressed because it wouldn't cover that. That'll stand for questions or allow for public comment?
Okay. I think everybody would like to have public comment.
Great.
At this point, anyone wishing to make a public comment, please come on up, and all we'd ask you to do, we've got, some of you may know, we've got a five-minute limit, so we make sure everybody gets a chance to speak, and if you would please come up, state your name and address, and then sign in, that'd be great.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Cook, 6854 Chincopan Circle, the director for the Aggieville Business Association. Thank you for reconsidering this ordinance. We were caught a little bit by surprise. I thought the, what I was thinking was going to happen was you were going to take the smoking ordinance from before and just add vaping to that, and that's, it just got deeper. So as a, we did have a statement here that I sent, but the Aggieville Business Association Board of Directors strongly disagrees with your inclusion of patios in the new smoking/vaping ordinance. We're very concerned that this is an unnecessary overreach that will create another negative impact to our local businesses that are small businesses that we're celebrating today. We would rather the city ordinance align itself more with the business-friendly Kansas state ordinance, even further reducing the distance from smokers to the access point to the more manageable 10 feet. Smoking and vaping should require some restrictive ordinances, we agree with that, but they are legal substances used legally by a wide spectrum of Kansas citizens. We should not be adding any more hurdles to our businesses in a very stagnant economy. If you notice, we've got some businesses that are struggling and adding any more enforcement workload on the police force. I don't know why they would have to get involved in this. A number of our establishments have spent considerable amount of money to add or to expand their patios in response to the ban from earlier on the tobacco use inside the buildings. Troop strength is down, KSU enrollment is down, and we would ask you to please reconsider and not add any more measures to further restrict our existing businesses.
Any questions for Dennis? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julie Gibbs. I live at 4541 Periwinkle Drive. I'm speaking tonight, first, on behalf of the Manhattan Area Risk Prevention Coalition, or MARPC. I've been affiliated with the Coalition since 2007 and have most recently been elected as chair this last fall. MARPC is a drug-free community, or DFC recipient. DFC grants provide local communities, local community coalitions funding to prevent youth substance abuse, including prescription drugs, marijuana, tobacco, and alcohol. This grant allows MARPC to involve and engage the local community to prevent substance abuse among youth. The mission and work of MARPC is in alignment with the purpose of the local Clean Air Ordinance, which is to improve and protect the public's health, including youth, by eliminating smoking in public places of employment, guarantee the right of non-smokers to breathe smoke-free air, and recognize that the need to breathe smoke-free air shall have priority over the choice to smoke. I'd first like to come at this from a standpoint of demonstrating good health, especially to our youth. MARPC is made up of many subcommittees, one being the Data Assessment Committee. These individuals are responsible for gathering data that could be useful in helping develop our programs. We know that smoking has decreased across the board when it comes to the traditional cigarette. This is due in part to education around the dangers of smoking, and probably a bit in part to the rise in popularity of e-cigarettes or vaping. According to the National College Health Assessment conducted at K-State in 2018, less than 10% of K-State students smoke or vape. We can also assume these same individuals probably make up the majority of the clientele in Aggieville bars. The issue of secondhand smoke comes into play if we are to consider making any patio that is part of our bar or restaurant exempt from the smoking ordinance. Serving as the new local health officer and director of the Riley County Health Department, I would like to speak to the point on secondhand smoke exposure. This exposure causes more than 53,000 deaths annually. It's the third most preventative cause of death in the U.S., and it causes disease and premature death in children and adults who do not smoke. There is no risk-free exposure to secondhand smoke, even in outdoor areas. I know that bar owners are worried about losing business. I think that my previous stat of less than 10% of K-State students who smoke or vape speaks for itself, but we've also polled countless amounts of articles that have proven smoking ordinances, even the most strict, do not cause a decline in sales. So I urge you that this is not about taking rights away from smokers, but it's rather a public health issue, so please consider that in your decision. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I am Shanika Rose. I'm with the Riley County Health Department. I'm the Chronic Disease Risk Reduction Coordinator, and I am going to read a statement on behalf of one of our MARPC Coalition members. Here we go. Dear Manhattan City Commission, I am a certified tobacco treatment counselor and nurse practitioner practicing on Fort Riley. I am also a retired military. My son attends K-State. I love their tobacco and vape policy, and I have multiple military friends and colleagues who live in Manhattan. I've had the opportunity to attend two of your previous meetings on the Manhattan Clean Air Ordinance. First of all, I applaud the work that you have done to better the health of your community. I understand that there is currently some discussion about whether or not the smoking, excuse me, whether or not to allow smoking and vaping on outdoor patios. Since I was unable to attend tonight, I want to voice a strong opinion against normalizing smoking and vaping in any way. If you allow people and in the community to use tobaccos on patios, it indirectly sends a message that tobacco use is the norm within the community. As I perform tobacco cessation counseling daily, I hear that one of the most difficult challenges for people to overcome when they choose to gain freedom from tobacco is encountering its use in community settings, and I frequently hear how difficult it will be because of everyone in their social circle using tobacco. This is especially true for youth. Youth see older adults exhibiting certain behavior, and they tend to model that behavior. I understand recent data has been released that states that only 11% of people in Manhattan currently smoke. Since the majority of the population does not smoke, it seems reasonable that the public places should, excuse me, public places, including patios, should be smoke and vape-free. Here are some excerpts from the American Lung Association Policy Statement. It states, "E-cigarettes are not safe and can cause irreversible lung damage and lung disease. No one should use any cigarette or any other tobacco product." This message is even more urgent today following the increasing reports of vaping-related illnesses and deaths worldwide, or nationwide. E-cigarettes contain chemicals that are harmful to lung health, such as heavy metals, carcinogens, vegetable glycerin, prophylactic glycol. They all develop, this developing in lungs of the youth may be more risky, making what the Surgeon General refers to as a "youth e-cigarette epidemic" even more alarming. As of November 13, 2019, officials count for 2,172 cases of vaping-related injuries in every state except Alaska, as well as the District of Columbia and the U.S. Virgin Islands, according to the CDC. At least 42 deaths have been confirmed in 24 states, including the District of Columbia. With the ordinance was first discussed and implemented, there have been no documented deaths from e-cigarettes. Now that we know that thousands of cases of injuries and multiple deaths have occurred, at this time, there has been, also at this time, there has been an outcry of the teen vaping epidemic by the Surgeon General. Please update your ordinance to include smoke and vape-free patios, using today's information and not that of a decade ago. Very respectfully, Wayne Darso, Certified Tobacco Treatment Specialist, APRN. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stan Watt. In 2008, I served as the chairperson for the Clean Air Manhattan, the group that created and promoted the current non-smoking ordinance. And this ordinance was overwhelmingly approved by the citizens of Manhattan and implemented in 2009. And as Commissioner McKee pointed out on the ballot, it was very clear that patios would be included in that. It was an administrative decision or a local legal, it was never challenged that the patio should be eliminated, but the citizens of Manhattan expected the patios to be included in that. This ordinance has been in effect for over 10 years now and has worked very effectively. There's some discussion, there was discussion at the time that the ordinance would decline the businesses, particularly for the bars and restaurants, and we found very clearly that this has not been the case, nor will it be the case as it's continued as it is. And again, the citizens of Manhattan had that in mind. For as many people that might not go out to eat, there's much, many, there's as many, if not more, people that go out to eat because they can not have to experience clean air. Let's see, I went off script, so... You know, I've had many, many people comment, including many restaurant and bar owners, that this isn't effective and has commented on its benefits. It has, it has not had an adverse economic effect. In fact, it's had a positive economic impact because people go out and they are not burdened by the fear or the discomfort or health issues of breathing secondhand smoke, which is clear. I do applaud the commission and affirm their effort and intent to not only continue the ordinance, but to combine it with the e-cigarette ordinance approved. This assures that we can continue to breathe that free of toxic secondhand smoke. Research continues to affirm that secondhand smoke, whether inhaled indoors or outdoors, is just as toxic as our health, to our health, as directly smoking. This research has been well documented. I do applaud and affirm the action of including the e-cigarette ordinance and combining it with it. The impact of smoking e-cigarettes and vaping is of particular concern to our youth, and research has indicated that there has been a dramatic increase in cigarette and vaping among our youth, giving a valid reason to combine both, maintain, and maintain both ordinances in the strictest sense. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bill Porter. I own Porters and O'Malley's and rental property here in town. I've been in business for over 25 years. I've owned multiple businesses in this town. And what I can say, we like how it is now. It has been working for 10 years. No one will disagree that the inside, yes, we, you know, yes, we fought it. Of course we did. It hurts business, and whether they say it does or not, I lived through it. Okay? Anybody that has owned a bar 25 years, I think Doug Long's owned one longer than me, but I lived through it. It does hurt. That's fine. But the patios, you guys do not know my customers like I do, so please don't tell me that you do. And if you want to go for the safety, we all know it's bad for you, yes, but it's still a choice, and it is my choice, you know, as an owner. People vote with their feet. If you do not like my establishment, you do not come in. Okay? So if you're telling me it's going to help my business, no. What it's going to do is when you're talking about, okay, safety. So how this is written, basically, I'm forcing my customers off my patio that we have spent thousands of dollars to accommodate everybody. That's what you do in business. You try to accommodate as many people as you can. Okay? So you're basically telling me that now that my smokers and, you're telling me I have to put them in the street? I mean, essentially, that's where you would have to go, is the street, if you want to be legal. So are you going to have people standing out in the street? Whereas my patios, they're on them, they're safe. There's not cars going by, there's not children walking by. We're, I'm sorry, we're more of a drinking establishment. That's what we are. People come to those establishments for that reason. So basically, here it is, we're just, we like the ordinance how it was. It was working, and it's fine. The enforcement thing, you want to cause a problem with the police department? My goodness. And am I going to have to employ now people for the weekends, game days? We have a transient community. We have people coming in from out of town all the time. So do I have to employ more people just to go around and tell people they can't? You have to go out in the middle of the street. You have to go over here if you want, if you want to smoke. That's ridiculous. Look at the safety concerns and the poor police department. They already, right now, how it was written, they couldn't, it was almost enforceable. Talk to the judges. I mean... I mean, it, yes, well, sorry, going off here. Again, basically what I'm just saying, it's a choice. We have establishments, they're run like they are. We're having a hard enough time because of the hotel and the streets. We'll be lucky if any of us are down there by the 18 months after we get done just getting, you know, losing parking. So please don't tell me that taking smoking of our patios is going to increase my business. It's not going to happen. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, how are you? I'm in the same boat as Billy. I've been down there 20 years. I know we said, or the lady earlier said that Aggieville is majority college kids. That's not true. We have a lot of soldiers, we have a lot of people from the community, we have a lot of people that come in from out of town. They do smoke. I took, just at my big place, I took a 30% hit. I never gained it back. I know he just said we would. And when we fought this back in '08, they all said we'd get it. All their stats said this. Everything that we got said it wouldn't. We never got it back. My little place hit it 50%. I never got that back either. Where we get hit the hardest is early, not late. The people getting off work, coming down there, they do want to go somewhere and have a drink and smoke. I smoked years and years ago. I quit. I didn't have a problem with it. I was in the middle of the smoking era. But this would be honestly devastating. I've spent close to $100,000 just in my patio to be able to let people. I've got $30,000 in just heaters to be able to use it all year. Last Wednesday, I walked out just to see how many people were inside to outside. There was more people outside on my patio, sitting with people, having a drink because one, maybe two of them were smoking. Nobody was inside my building. They were all sitting on my patio. So I'm not going to go into huge detail. I sent you guys an email, kind of showed you guys some of this stuff. I don't want to sit up here and repeat myself on a whole bunch of things. But I hope you guys please leave it the way it is or move it to what the state is. Leave the patios alone. The other thing, before I leave, on the enforcement, the vaping, I've kicked vaping out years ago inside mine. I don't like it anyways, but now there's smokeless vaping. I didn't even know about this existed, but I was on my camera Saturday night watching. There was someone inside the building, smoking it, had it hidden in their hand where nobody could see it. The only reason why I figured it out is because my cameras lit them up because they're in infrared. I could have got that ticket. None of my guys would have seen it, but if an officer would have saw it and decided to write me the ticket when, we don't allow it anyways, that enforcement side, you know, there's got to be somewhat, a little bit of leniency on us. We think Aggieville, those bars are just making all kinds of money. They're not like they used to be. They're struggling. That's kind of why I think we're rebuilding the district and we'll get there someday, but right now it's tough down there. So please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Anyone else?
Nick Powers, RC McGrath's, Blue Hills Catering. I also, I just want to tell you guys thanks for listening to our words and thanks for keeping our, our city safe and, and I appreciate growing up here, living here and keeping my family safe. I was here in '08 and I do agree with Stan and I will, I will see Stan out in, in, in public. And I enjoy seeing him because he actually, you guys did pass a good law back in '08. I, I thought it was a solid, solid thing. I didn't agree with it at the time, but then I, I learned that this was, this was for the better of us. But now it's, now it's like, we have to, we have to survive on this. We, we put money into patios and I'm, there's no, no reason for me to talk. Billy and Ryan, they both nailed it on the head. It's, we're struggling as it is to make ends meet and then you're just going to take that much more away from us. I ask that we compromise and work with us a little bit. Tell us what we can do to, to compromise and make this work. I really do appreciate the law the way it is. I think it's working. I think we just keep it the way it is. I don't, I don't agree with, with, with what's going on right now. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here, obviously, for downtown Manhattan and I want to say that the majority of, of our business, businesses that would mostly be impacted by this ordinance, which would be restaurants and bars, agree with the sentiments of the representatives here from Aggieville. One thing that hasn't been touched on too much in this conversation, that really has been touched on a lot in my district are these fines. And it feels particularly heavy-handed because how will it be enforced, number one? Number two, how do you know where those people are coming from? If they, for example, and not to call anybody out, but if there's a wedding or an event at the Waram, many of those smokers step outside, they're on the sidewalk, they're in the street already. This, this ensures that they're on the sidewalk and on the streets, but if they walk any further in any direction, they're going to be standing in front of another establishment that's open at the same time in the evening. So how do you enforce where those people came from and who are you going, which proprietor are you going to find? The Waram or Harry's, as an example? Not calling anybody out, but I'm sure you can see what I'm saying about this. The other thing is, this is a difficult ordinance for small businesses particularly because small businesses already have fewer employees. They have less people to watch over a lot of patrons. They're trying to provide excellent customer service. As you are aware, that's what we do best in this community. And what I heard over and over was, now do we need to employ smoking watchers? Somebody, an employee who's just going to, whose sole purpose is to make sure that patrons and employees are not, or that they're more than 20 feet away from an access point, that they're not on the sidewalk, that they didn't wander into the street? I mean, on Points Avenue, you're in the street to be 20 feet away from an access point. Pretty much wherever you go, that's, that's where you are. So I would really like for you all to consider the difficult, the difficultness of this ordinance on small business. It's, it's really quite heavy-handed. Please take that into consideration.
Thanks, Gina.
Hi, everybody. My name's Doug Long. From Manhattan, I've been in the food and liquor industry in Manhattan for 45 and a half years, between Manhattan and Womigo. I have agreed with all of the changes that have happened between the age, changes going up, the smoking ordinances, everything. I think what's going on right now is really viable and really real, it's working. You know, the thing is though, is that I've got signatures for the commissioners here for, in the last two days, just for my establishment that I have now on Stag Hill Road. And probably 80% of those signatures are non-smokers. And, you know, they come there because of family and friends and what we do there that they like to see and enjoy. And, you know, it's just all about, you know, I can remember when we were growing up, everybody was created equal in this world, but it doesn't look like it's that way no more because other people are trying to change our lives. And it's not a good feeling. You know, we've worked as hard as we've worked and, you know, we've got customers from all over that come in for football games and they're hearing about this out of Manhattan, Kansas. And they're thinking, well, where are we going to go? You know, we've got a couple of people coming to football games, sit on our patios, eat our pizza and smoke cigars. You know, that's, they're going to do it somewhere. They go to the, you know, just a matter of, what's equal for everybody has to be equal, you know? It's just a battle out there for the business and the industry and we pay our property taxes, we own our buildings, we pay our taxes, we got to do all of these things. But you keep taking the cut into it, I think the law, or the, the, the non-smoking thing needs to stay the way it is. You know, not just because it's, it's working really well. We've advocated by everything, but you know, don't make it tougher than it already is. We're all small businesses, we work hard. You know, I've seen the best years of my life in that 45 years. But don't make it tougher than it already is, okay? I really appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Debbie Ness and I'm here tonight representing the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition. As you are aware, the Coalition supports the ordinance before you tonight. When the voters overwhelmingly approved the ordinance in 2008, they did so with the understanding that patios and other outdoor areas would be smoke-free. The ordinance before the Commission tonight respects the intent of the 2008 ordinance and the wishes of the voter. Smoke-free air laws in restaurants and bars protects patrons and workers from involuntary exposure to secondhand smoke, but as we've heard tonight, owners often express concern that such laws will harm their businesses. It is well-established that no smoking laws generally have a null or positive economic impact on restaurants and businesses. The most recent study I could find was published in November 2017 by researchers from the Department of Health and Policy and Management at the University of North Carolina. It is an observational study using panel data. The general conclusion was that these laws generally have, as I said, a null or positive economic impact on restaurants and bars. I pulled the five conclusions from the studies that were classified as, quote, "extensive prior research," mentioned in the study. And as summarized, they make a good case for the negligible potential effect our local ordinance would have on bar owners in decreasing either the number of employees or their sales, indoors or outdoors. So I'm going to read some of the quotes from, from, from those conclusions. The first one, "Meta-analysis of the Economic Impact of Smoking Bans in the Hospitality Sector Showed Overall No Substantial Economic Gains or Losses. Differentential Impacts Were Observed Across Individual Business Types and Outcomes Variables, But at the Aggregate Level, These Appear to Balance Out." This is in reference to clean air policy in Minnesota and was published in the American Journal of Preventive Medicine. "Enactment of a Comprehensive Clean Indoor Air Policy in Minnesota Did Not Result in Significant Changes in Bar-Restro Employment in Rural or Urban Regions of the State or the State as a Whole. In Minnesota, Neither Bars nor Restaurants Were Associated with Significant Changes in Employment Following the Enactment of a Comprehensive Statewide Clean Indoor Air Policy." This next one is about North Dakota. "This Study Is the First to Analyze the Economic Impact of Smoke-Free Air Laws in North Dakota on Restaurant and Bar Employment Following the 2012 Expansion of the Statewide Law to Cover All Restaurants and Bars. We Find No Evidence of a Significant Adverse Effect of Smoke-Free Air Laws on Restaurant and Bars, Consistent with Results from Previous Studies Conducted in North Dakota and Throughout the United States. Prior Employment Levels and Prevailing Economic Conditions Prove to be the Main Drivers of Restaurant and Bar Employment, Not Smoke-Free Air Laws." And then the last one that I will read, "There is no evidence that the Pueblo Smoke-Free Air Act had a negative economic impact on Consumer Price-Index-adjusted Tavern and Restaurant Sales Tax Revenues. From a Fiscal Policy Perspective, this Ordinance may have contributed to a net increase in sales tax revenues for the City of Pueblo. The business openings-closing data suggests that the confidence Pueblo's business sector had in the local hospitality industry was not negatively influenced by the Smoke-Free Air Act." One other thing that I would like to mention is Kansas Health Matters publishes a report about the number, percentage of smokers in each county across the state. And in 2011, 21.4% of adults, there were 21.4% of adults who were smokers in Riley County. That number has dropped now in 2017, which is the year for the most recent data, to 11.1%. So while we can't look specifically at Manhattan's clean air ordinance as having a direct impact, our local clean air ordinance combined with other efforts to reduce smoking has significantly reduced the percentage of adults in Riley County who are smokers. So the Flint Hills Wellness Coalition urges the Commission to pass the ordinance in its current form on second reading. Doing so will continue this community's longstanding commitment to supporting public health practices that improve both individual health and ultimately our community's health. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Anyone else, please?
This brings back memories here. I can remember the night before the city commission was going to vote on a, on an act. There was some meeting there, we had the Mr. Levine, who was the leader of the group that's come and visited here. It was interesting, he, at that time, he said, you know, we've been getting lots of money and you know where it comes from, but it's not direct, but you know, and our, our members know, and we've suggested to our members to send it back. That this is a local thing and we want to deal with it on a local level. We don't want to have tobacco money coming into town to affect our politics. And that was interesting. I learned about those things. Had any idea about that before. And I'm not suggesting that's happening here. I'm just reflecting on the issue of tobacco, vaping and its medical problems. I think as I've been listening to this, the last bit, would I want my grandkids to come out and sit on the patio if it's a nice day? And they might have an asthma situation and get exposed to somebody vaping next to them? Ah, the doctors will make the money. Go to the ER, it'll cost you 2,000 bucks to just get in there. I've thought over the period of time, and that's one of the reasons I'm... I've thought over the period of time, and that's one of the reasons I've been active in this area is there's a conflict of interest. I make more money if you just do away with this thing. If we get twenty percent more people smoking, I'll make more money. There'll be more people with chronic lung disease, more people with heart attacks, more people that have hundred thousand dollars worth of healthcare because they've had an acute problem. And so that's something we don't think about too much. I talked to a patient this last week who currently vapes a bit. He used to smoke a lot. He did quit his smoking, he does vaping, he doesn't like to vape anymore. And so he's using nicotine lozenges, which are not as effect on the brain as much. He's working harder at trying to get free from this, from this issue. But it was interesting to talk with him and to see what's kind of going on. And he realized, and I think many people, in fact, he's one person who quit smoking because it was difficult to do it. He's paying more taxes on tobacco, so it's more difficult to do it. And the knowledge that is a real threat to his life and, and a long life of good health. So I'm always on this situation for kind of looking not so much at the immediate kind of financial issues and that, but to do what you know is good for the good health of the people. Will have less, I mean, I think it'd be interesting to see, since we have less people smoking now, and part of it's because of that standard and behavior, that possibly our healthcare costs have gone down from what they would have been if, if we'd still have that situation as much as we do now. Ideally, kids would never get exposed to nicotine and it wouldn't be an issue. Nobody smokes because they love it, it's because nicotine is, it's an addictive process. Well, I just thought I'd share these thoughts with you, feel strongly about them. And I don't know, I think we had like seventy percent or something of the people voted for that, 2008. That's a pretty good percentage, especially when you think back about that. I don't know how it would be now. I really don't. We have interest to see. But anyway, I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will close public comment and come back to the Commission for discussion. You want to start?
I'll start. I'm always the one that starts though, so. So I, I thought about a lot about this issue since last time that we considered it, and I, I appreciate people who have reached out over the last two weeks to comment on it, even if I don't fully see eye to eye, I think it's important that we see those messages to reconsider our positions. But I, I kind of want to level a few facts that I think are important, that helped me reach my decision. First and foremost, we as a society unfortunately aren't always driven by morality and are more driven by money. So let's, let's set a few economic standards first. Smoking, according to the CDC, smoking-related illness in the United States costs more than three hundred billion dollars to our economy every year. In terms of government-paid health expenditures related to smoking-related illnesses, forty-five billion every year is spent in Medicare, thirty-nine point nine billion in Medicaid every year, and twenty-three point eight billion in spending on other government-sponsored insurance programs, all related to smoking incidents. Another interesting fact that the CDC posts on their website, since 1964 approximately two point five million non-smokers have died from health problems caused by smoke exposure to secondhand smoke. Two point five million non-smokers have died because of exposure to secondhand smoke. And fundamentally, I think that's what this issue comes down to. I went through several studies that documented and researched the effects of smoking in outdoor areas and patios, because I heard a lot, when you go out into the outdoors, the smoke quickly disseminates, so it's not going to affect you. What numerous studies have found is that within, if you're within two to three feet of a smoker in outdoors, it is no different than being in an enclosed area where several smokers are smoking. Absolutely no difference. And even as you move away from the smoke, you still risk exposure to it and no amount of secondhand smoke for any amount of time has positive health consequences, they're all negative. And so when people talk to me on this issue about choice and individual rights, that is what people who smoke in public prevent me from doing. If I happen to be in a public place and I just happen to walk by someone who's smoking, that person just made a health decision on my behalf. I didn't have a choice to make that decision, they made it for me. And so while I'm sympathetic to the arguments of the bottom line of your business, I don't think the bottom line of businesses is more important to protect than public health. And so therefore, I am supportive of the ordinance because I think it lives to the spirit of what voters originally voted for, and I think it better protects public health. Smoking is a, is a societal problem that we still deal with. It's reducing and we could, should continue to implement laws that continue to discourage it from happening because it costs us money as taxpayers and it's the moral thing to do. If you want to smoke in private, you can do that, but you should not be allowed to make health decisions for other people because you are smoking in public. And so I am fully supportive of the ordinance as written, and I look forward to voting yes.
I lived here when the first ordinance was passed. I signed the petition, I'm sure. I was not a commissioner then, and, but you may not know my background, but for sixteen years, my husband had emphysema and was home on oxygen. And I was a caregiver, but I had to work because I had the health insurance. And so I am, he smoked even when he had the oxygen concentrator, Dr. Gardner, which is not wise. I, I, I need to support the healthier choice and the healthier route by limiting smoking, given my history and given the history of the people that I have associated with in the community that have suffered because of smoking. And I don't know anybody that's suffered because of vaping. I just know that I connect the dots between smoking and vaping because they're both inhaled and there's very little control on, on vaping about what goes into your lungs. So I am compelled to support the, the current, this ordinance that we're trying to craft. I do support the twenty feet and I, I don't, you know, I have been in some rest, some patios and have been irritated by the smokers next, even ten feet away. I don't go to casinos in here in Kansas because they, the, the smoke is so thick, I don't even want to have to tolerate it. I, I just, so I, I'd like to hear more discussion on the Commission perhaps about golf courses. I really hadn't considered that as a, I mean, until we got our materials. And I haven't, we haven't had a discussion about it at all. But if, I think that's where I come down.
Can I have one quick thing? I'm so sorry. Related to the fines, I would be open to looking at the fines and maybe putting more fine on the user rather than the business. I think the point that Gina brought up is a valid one, and I, I would want to understand how that would work out. So I would be open to that. And one additional study that I forgot to mention, in Alberta and Nova Scotia, Canada, they implemented laws to ban smoking on patios. After they did that, what they found is secondhand smoke exposure in Alberta dropped by an estimated twenty-five percent and Nova Scotia twenty-one percent. So these ordinances have positive outcomes and they accomplish the goal in which we seek to accomplish. And so I would be interested in learning more about fines, and I just wanted to, I forgot that one study. Thanks.
Commissioner, I, one question about that, since you asked about the fines. What's in the ordinance now is the state law minimum, so we're not going to be able to reduce that with respect to the businesses? If you would like to have a stricter fine against individuals, like you mentioned, you can be stricter than the state law. You can impose a higher fine, but you cannot lessen those fines. They are at the state law minimum right now.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, my thoughts haven't changed from the first reading. I voted against it because I, I see it as an overreach and, and, and I'm not a smoker and I don't vape and I don't like it. And I voted for the ordinance in 2008 because I didn't want people smoking in the restaurants. But, but, but I think what happened, even if the intent, and that's another one that I'm not going to buy into, I don't know what the intent was. You know, I read the thing, you know, to me it was we were banning it inside, not outside. And, and I think the restaurants adjusted to it. Basically, the smokers are segregated, the restaurants I go to, they don't bother me when I come in and out, and, and I know where they are. And I think what we've got is working, and I was all for consolidating these ordinances, but, but now we've gone overboard. You know, this gets passed like it is, if you're a country club member, you're not smoking on the golf course anymore. It's just that simple. You know, you gotta pay all that money to be a member of the country club, but if you go golfing, sorry, you're not going to smoke out there. And it seems like maybe the next step here is just put a sign right next to our, you know, cellphone ordinance, so that when you come into the city, it says, "Smoke Free Manhattan", can't smoke anywhere. Because what I see happening, this gets passed like it is, the money invested by the small businesses there, you know, goes out the drain, and people are going to move out on the sidewalk, and, and that's going to be a problem for me. Because they're all going to be out on the sidewalk and now I am going to inhale the secondhand smoke. I'm not doing that right now, but I will be shortly when this passes. Because the restaurants I frequent, they've got places that are out of the way, and some of the owners have told me, you know, part of their issue is that they've got employees that also smoke, and so they've got to take smoke breaks and they go out there and they've got the little butt cans and they keep the, the mess, you know, cleaned up, which is something else I've, I've always hated, the residue from the, from the cigarettes. And that's why I don't mind banning it in parks. Maybe that'll take care of some of the residue out there, you know, that, that's, that's okay with me. But, and then I, I read all these studies and, and I'm a big believer in, you know, process management, and one of the fundamentals there is you gather your information from the people closest to the process. And we've already heard the business owners say that, you know, their personal observation, their closeness to the process is much different than some of these academic studies. And so I tend to, again, you know, I have to lean towards the people that are actually out there in the trenches. And, and, and my wife's been a nurse for forty years and, and I, and I get all the medical reasons and, and I agree with all those, but I really think that this is going to make a very insignificant difference to the health issue if we maintain our ordinance like it currently is. And that means, you know, not getting consistent with the state at the twenty feet because we designed it that way, and it's worked that way for over ten years. So I still think it's, it's just a huge over, overreach. And, and, and it gets into the, you know, personal liberties of people. I know there's a balance and we've got a lot of laws like that, seatbelt laws, helmet laws. You know, you got, you gotta wear your seatbelt in your car, but you can ride your motorcycle without a helmet. And there's differences like that, and, and the county, of course, none of this will affect them. So if you're a, if you're a business owner, you can open up a smoke shop, you know, out in Riley County and it's good to go. Or you can open up a bar. And that's always bothered me too, because consistency, if I was an RCPD police officer, it would be irritating to have to understand that, okay, if I'm on this side of the line, I can give you a ticket for talking on your cellphone, on this side I can't. And the same with smoking, and it just complicates things. So when we talk consistency, you know, my priority would have been just do what the state law says. They passed one, let's just go with that. But okay, you know, Manhattan wants to be a little bit more progressive, fine, I can live with what we passed. But where we're going now, that's just a bridge too far. And, and I can see, you know, we may as well just put a sign up, "All Manhattan is a Smoke-Free Zone", ban the sale of cigarettes, ban the sale of vaping products, and just go whole hog if we're that serious about it.
So before I get into where I stand on this, tell me a little bit more about the smokeless vaping. How do you, how do we enforce that? Or is that not a factor when we talk about smoking and vaping?
Not necessarily familiar with what smoke, smokeless vaping is, but we define, we define an e-cigarette as, we have that long definition in there of, you have an automizer and, and a tool that, you know, creates that vape that you use. So what that person was referring to, where it wasn't visible, but you were smoking something, it's, it could still be an e-cigarette just because you can't see it, but I, I don't know specifically what that was.
Because the intent of smoking and vaping is the secondhand smoke or secondhand vape, whatever is out there. But if they're damaging themselves or smoking on their own or whatever it might be, is there a difference? Is there just no difference?
Commissioner, that, what Jared said is correct. The, the ordinance, if there's not a vapor at all that external, it, there requires an inhaling of a vapor to be within the ordinance. If there is a technology that exists that truly has no vapor that's external to it, then there might be a question of whether or not it falls within the ordinance, but that's not, that's something that would be an enforcement decision if there is some technology that truly doesn't have a vapor that, that would be addressed at, at the time.
Yeah, because that was what was brought up, so I was wondering about that.
Yes, and we had the definition up a while ago and we could pull it up again, but if it, if it falls within the deck, the definition, it would have to be an inhaling of a vapor as part of that.
With this, I think when we talk about safety and the ordinance was passed ten years ago, and if it was left out about the twenty-foot rule, living in Manhattan, I didn't know about the twen-, I knew about the twenty-foot rule, but I didn't actually feel like I was in, or somebody was in my way as they were smoking. And I think they went on campus, they took out the twenty feet, so nobody on campus may smoke now, employee or not, so that's taken out. But the reason I think this might be different for our city is not for the residents that live here or grow up here or that are here for years, but the ones that are visiting. So if you have people that are coming for football games or whatever entertainment they're coming for, for weddings and things like that, some of them may have that smoking habit. And if that's, that's the way I'm seeing this, is not just for businesses, but people that are just visiting our community. And I'm more comfortable with the twenty-foot rule, knowing that because we haven't enforced it in the past, it didn't seem to, I didn't see like a whole line of smokers twenty feet at, at any establishment. I, I go to Aggieville frequently, my husband and I go out to eat a lot, and we have never really experienced that. And I, I really hate smoke of any kind, it really bothers me. But I have never had to leave an outside area or an inside of any place because of it. So I haven't felt it myself as frequently as we go out to eat and enjoy what our community has to offer. So I, I'm concerned about the individuals that do visit Manhattan. If we take that out, that does become an issue if we decide to have conventions and conferences and we're thinking about expanding our entertainment districts. That does become an issue because it will be posted everywhere, so I have a concern for that. When we talk of secondhand smoke, it's repeated, constant secondhand smoke. For example, in the school district, we had to define what bullying was, the difference between teasing and bullying. Bullying is something that happens consistently and teasing is just a here and there. So if somebody's smoking or vaping, especially if it's twenty feet away, unless you're consistently with them, like in a household, I think it's somewhat negligible unless you're visiting the same area consistently over a period of time. I could be wrong about that, but that's the way I'm seeing this, as frequently, like I said, as I go out. I'm leaning towards removing the prohibition about the, on patios and keeping the twenty-foot rule, since we've had it all this time. We've, we've never really put it in there in the past. And only a few of you may have known that it was even there, but nobody came to us in the past ten years and said, hey, they're not supposed to be smoking twenty feet away from somewhere. I don't know if we've ever had a complaint like that, and if we have, at least I was not aware of it. So I'm assuming even the petitioners that had signed this and voted on it, never really came and said they're not supposed to be smoking twenty feet away, even if they had seen it. So I don't feel to do something that in this, in this sense, doesn't seem to be a major issue, the twenty feet, especially for those that... issue, the 20 feet, especially for those that are visiting establishments. So I'm leaning towards bullet point two and changing the ordinance as opposed to the first reading when we go to the second reading.
Just a couple of points, maybe. This is a fairly complicated item here to combine the state law of Kansas along with what we had found in 2008 and then what we'd found in the vaping ordinance that we passed later. And even in the vaping ordinance, one of the things that we had heard was, hey, let's all allow this vaping because it's proven that this will reduce the number of people smoking. What this tells you over and over is that sometimes science, or at least the dictation of science, gets it wrong. But I think as everybody knows, the march of history will be that pretty soon no one will smoke and no one will vape because it's, this is just inevitable. But we're here to kind of fix balance at this point in time. And the image of someone having an occasional cigar on the golf course just seems to me like we're vastly overreaching what the intent of the beginning of this was. And I respect the opinions of our business owners. I mean, we rely on them for a lot of things. They've been great for the community, they've supported the community. And I think in order to achieve a little bit of balance and as Commissioner Reddy said, you know, we've had this on the books for a long time. This is what's in Kansas law. I would even like to see it 10 feet just because of, I think Commissioner Butler, the last time we met, brought this up, when you're 20 feet from an access point, you're in the street. So those folks who have expanded patios to accommodate this, I think have already spent a lot of money and I think this is kind of an incremental change that we can apply and we'll come out on the other side in even better community. So I'm also inclined to adopt the prohibition or remove the prohibition on the, on the patios and stick with 20 feet.
One additional item I would want to tell the commission to consider before we make our final vote is, you know, another thing that can't happen at the country club, right, is you can't do cocaine either, right? And that seems like an outrageous comparison, right? But the only difference between cocaine and smoking is we as a society have normalized one of those things. And one of those things has a health impact even for people who don't want to do them. And so we as a governing body also have a responsibility to help establish norms in our community. And to Commissioner Butler's point, I would, I would be just fine exploring an entire smoking ban within the entire city of Manhattan. I don't hear anybody complaining and standing up for the individual rights of different drug users, but what we're talking about when we're talking about smoking is drugs. And we as a government body, our foundational mission is to protect public health and keep our citizens safe. And I feel like if we don't act on something like this and we're neglecting our duty. So that's really my final comment, but just something I would hope, just to impress upon you one more time.
Okay, any other further discussion?
I'm confused by what you said. At first you said that the 10-foot would, rule would be okay with you and then at the end you said that you were fine with the 20-foot?
Right. Now, the 20-foot, the 10-foot would be less restricted than the 20, but I'm okay with the 20, which is in accordance with state law.
Okay. So do we amend it?
I'm gonna go ahead and try and make a motion if it'll make sense. I was just gonna add that line to the end of it.
You've already rewritten it for me?
I have the section cited in, yeah.
I'll make the motion. We approve ordinance number 7465, amending Article III and repealing Article IV of Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinance to combine the smoking and e-cigarette ordinance with the deletion of Section 17-19 to B of the proposed ordinance that prohibits smoking on patios.
Second?
Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner McKee? Commissioner Morse?
No.
Mayor Dodson?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries three to two.
We'll now move to item B, which is to consider approving Warner Park Memorial Master Plan. And the presenter is Alfonso Leiva. Before everyone exits, I really appreciate everyone coming and expressing a view. I mean, this is really helpful to all of us, so I appreciate you coming and letting us know all of the points that you wish to express.
Yeah, so I'll do, I'll just submit.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Alfonso Leiva, park planner with Parks and Recreation, here again before you to discuss the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan. I think at this point, we've had a lot of input over the past couple of years. We're looking to finalize the plan before the end of the year and that was a goal of this commission moving forward. So for this presentation, I want to do, review the master plan draft document as presented to the park board on November 4th, discuss a little bit about the park board recommendation and feedback, look at the Warner Park road options and then a recommendation. So the report outline has six chapters with the introduction, talking about, you know, where is Warner Memorial Park. In a recent survey that we did on social media, not a lot of people, not a lot of the, of our citizens know where this is. So it's definitely a hidden gem within our park system. And number two, chapter number two, we talk about the history. There's quite a bit of a history with Warner Memorial Park and when it was adopted into the Manhattan park system in the late 50s. The third chapter looks at the existing features, conditions and uses, so what's currently there, the nine-hole disc golf course, the cross-country that occurs multiple times a year, the trails throughout the, throughout the park. And then chapter four is really the meat and potatoes of the, of the document. And this talks about the process of the, of the latest master plan. Now, the last master plan that was done was completed back in 2002, is when the last master plan was completed. And so we wanted to update that and this is where we're at. So we are now at a crossroads because the last time that I was here, we talked about the road and we're back at the road again. You know, do we want to open up that road? And this is something that came across, this is something that was discussed at the park board meeting at the beginning of this month. And so this is the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan as proposed by the, by the master plan that was presented to the park board on November 4th. And so this is what was recommended by the park board back in last year in October. And so this was the new restroom shelter and expanded parking over on the northeast side off of Shuff Road, leaving the existing nine-hole course and not expanding it, improving the trails that are around the park, also looking to consolidate some of the trails and the cross-country route. And that's something that we would want to do for maintenance purposes. Another item that was approved then was also the, the new rockery gardens and those are erosion control measures throughout the park. One of, one of the items that, that was recommended as well is the ravine bridge on the south side. And that was to complete the loop around the trail. Throughout the, in 2017, when we sent out a community survey, that was one of the top items that people wanted to see was a loop around the park. And so that bridge would, would help achieve that. And then we also look at new pollinator meadows. So this is a measure that we internally, including the park staff, we wanted to look at Warner Park as, you know, as it was intended, as a natural park. We had a study actually from one, from a student, a landscape architecture student, which involved the diversity of, the biodiversity in the park. And so they had recommended ways that we could plant new vegetation, we could do some different hay measures. Right now, we hay the park about once a year. In some locations, we could extend that to two years. It would still combat the woody vegetation, but it would leave that, that biodiversity. And then it was also, it wasn't discussed as much. What was discussed was the, was the disc golf at this point. But throughout the process, throughout the master plan process, what we heard is no one was in favor really of opening up the road. That was something that we heard. Many comments from the neighbors, many of the neighbors still remember back when the, when the road was open and when there were parties in the park in the 80s and early 90s. That road was closed in 1990 by park staff. Later in 1996, when there was some activity to really redevelop Warner Memorial Park, that came up again. And the commission actually favored not opening the road at that point. So this is what was presented as the master plan, what was recommended by the park board from last year. So in the discussion that happened earlier this month, the road came up again. And the, the recommendation that the park board gave was to approve the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan as presented, with the exception of reconsidering, open up the road to the extent of Concept B. Now, if you recall in Concept B, and I'll show you kind of what the, what park board is recommending when I say Concept B. When, in August, when we were here, when I was here presenting the, the master plan options of expanding the road, Concept B was the one that was just short of the enhanced shelter. Concept A was looking to extend a little bit further. Now, when, when city staff went to propose these options, it was more at a, at a higher level, you know? We didn't get into the, into the details as to what each implication would have with, with each concept. But when park board recommended this, with this latest recommendation that we extend to Concept B, we, city staff went in and looked a little bit more into, into detail as to what, what are the implications with what park board recommended. And so those implications would be, there'd be quite a bit of grading. And I want to show you a couple of pictures so we can get an idea of what, what's happening here in Warner Park. So this is the existing shelter that is right here, right in the middle. That's the existing shelter right there. This, these were built back in the, in the 50s, early 60s. And these were some of the shelters that were vandalized quite a bit back in the 80s. One of the shelters, well, one of the restrooms further north of this area had to actually be removed at that point. So throughout the conversation at park board, what was discussed was, all right, we want to, we want to make the park more accessible to the community. How do we do that? What's the point of opening the road? You know, do we, do we go back to the intent from the 1950s and open the road to the full extent? Or do we open it enough to, to a point that makes sense? So this existing shelter. And so that's, that's where the conversation was and that's where city staff went back to, to look at, was what would make sense in opening the road? So at this point, this is looking to the north from the shelter area. There is a sidewalk there currently. As you get closer to the road, this is the road right here. This is looking off of the road towards the shelter. It's a little bit secluded, there's, it's, it's in a little, little cove area. As we get closer to what the park board is recommending, which is Concept B, you kind of get close to where the cross-country occurs and you could lightly see where some, some of the chalk is. This is where, kind of where the cross-country route goes through. And so this is that little area where Concept B is recommending the turnaround. And so one of the implications that we look at, if you could tell here, as proposed in Concept B, is there would be quite a bit of regrading that would have to occur. We'd have to go in with some, some of the new gravel. We would have to address some of the drainage to be sure to keep that, that drainage. We'd have to put in a couple of pipes under any kind of roundabout in this area. Not only that, but if you look here, it might be better if I went to this image. So this is where that area, right around where B is, it's about, about 80 to 100 yards from where the shelter is. You can't really see the shelter. So with the direct implementation of the recommendation from park board to extend the road to Concept B, we would also want to look at possibly putting in a trail or a sidewalk to access, to access that shelter. And so as you get closer to where that sidewalk is that goes to the shelter, you could see where there's a lot less grade that one would have to deal with in, in extending it a little bit further than Concept B. And so that, that implication would be, you know, monetary. We wouldn't have to have a major project have to occur at this point. And so in the, the recommendation that was in, in your packet, you know, we wanted to show you what, what is the park board recommended. And throughout the discussion, the discussion was, you know, what's, what's the intent? You know, the intent is to make it more accessible, to make the park more accessible, to open it up. I'm sure there'll be some comments here, you know, in support of closing down the road or leaving it as it was intended in the 1950s. Throughout the discussion at park board, it was also discussed, you know, is there a way that we could test opening the road? Is there, is there a way that, that we could implement this? Well, there would be and the easiest one would be if we went tomorrow and just opened up the gate. And it would be in use as it was intended in the 1950s. However, there's also implications with that. Because then if we open up the road, how do we keep people on the road? And so right now, where the existing parking lot is, there's quite a bit of limestone around the, around the border and that's to keep people out of the park. Because that was one of the other things that, that occurred back in the, in the 80s and such. People were going out there in their four-by-fours and, and doing donuts and really tearing up the prairie. So with any of these options of opening up the road, we would need to consider, how, how do we keep people on the road? Whether it's through limestone boulders, which is something that could be done with, with in-house labor. I know sometimes we get projects where we could get some limestone boulders, but if this was something that wanted to get implemented right away, we would have to purchase those. So those would be a material expense. Another consideration would be, you know, is there a way, and this was a discussion at the park board as well, was, is there a way, can we do some sort of gate mechanism? You know, can we, can the gate be opened during the day and then closed at night? In internal conversations with staff, that would be fairly hard operationally. We don't have any other park that we close the gate at night. Annaberg is open night and day. But we do have within our park system, you know, a 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM open timeframe. You know, if anybody's in the park with their vehicle over... You know, if anybody's in the park with their vehicle over past 11, they could get ticketed for trespassing. So that would be an implication for, for this op, for this option, and really with any option, opening the road, is that gate mechanism. It's so, it, it preferably it'd be something that would be open at all hours of the night. But we could do, and, and this is something I've discussed with the Riley County Police, the Riley County Police Department, is possibly changing the hours, something similar that we have over at Hudson Trail. Hudson, Hudson Trail passes behind some property, private property. And the hours there are dusk to dawn. And so that's definitely a consideration that could be done if the roads are opened here.
Was it ever explored to like do a camera? I mean, if I, I take my dog out on the Hudson Trail, I'll be publicly shamed on social media within 24 hours. So, I mean, that's obviously very effective for them.
Yeah, it's something that, that we've discussed as well. It'd be something like, like the, what are they called? The trail, the deer, deer trails or, or something similar? Trail cameras essentially. It's something that could potentially be, be implemented, but yeah, it's something that we could look into. So as I was saying, the recommendation by the park board was to, to extend the, the road opening to Concept B, which is around this area. However, once we had, once we discussed internally, you know, what, what's, what's the point of opening the road? We want to make more accessible. We want to get people somewhere. And that would be the shelter and what would make most sense. And that would be, and, and the more cost-effective, something that's not as disruptive to the drainage and to the grading. And that would be to put in parking just to the, to the north of the shelter. Kind of there in the picture where I had my car. It's relatively flat. We would go in there, scrape out, you know, a 20 by 50 area for, for maybe about five vehicles and a little turnaround that, in that area as well. So with this option as well, you know, if we open up the road, how do we keep people on the road? And again, those would be some of the same measures, so limestone, some sort of metal fencing, maybe some posts and wires. I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with Marla Park, just north of town. They have parking areas there and they have posts and wire, you know, that's to keep people out of the park. So maybe it's something that we could do similar there as well. And it wouldn't have to be throughout the whole road. There are areas where the ditch does go down quite a bit. Maybe those vehicles with a little bit bigger tire could get through it for sure. And so that's where we're at. The recommendation, really, we're looking for feedback on the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan, specifically on the motion set forth by parks, by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. You know, we're looking, you know, do we, do we keep the road closed? If so, then let's move on. If we want it open, all right, but to what extent? And so those are the two, really, the, the two issues that we have here at hand with this new recommendation by the park board.
Questions for Alfonso? Anyone? So, Alfonso, let's hear from the public and then we'll come back to you.
Good evening. My name is Debbie DiVannudo and I live in northeast Manhattan. For the three people that are new that don't know me, I am Kern Warner's great-granddaughter. I am the advocate for the road. I fully approve this plan right here. I think this is great. The one thing I wanted to point out, that I pointed out to the park board the other night, which by the way, at the park board advisory meeting, I was the only person there. There was not a resident one there. In fact, I found it ironic, the gentleman there was there to provide, present about the pavilion over at the city park, ended up speaking up for opening up the road. So either I talked really good or he, he heard what I was saying really well. But right now, if you take this road out, this is the only part of the park you're using. Twenty, thirty acres. You can't get up here. This park was paid for by the community. It's a community park. It's not a neighborhood park. It's a community park. It's supported by tax dollars. Every taxpayer has a right to go into that park and to go into whenever they want. I don't want to have to call and get a key so I can drive in because I can't walk in there because of a bad hip. I think what you're going to hear a lot tonight is from the neighbors talking about vandals. Well, you know what? I went back and did some research. There was no big newspaper articles about, there was vandals out there every single night. There was a few problems, but we cannot let stupid people in this world rule what we do. You want to talk about vandals? Maybe we need to close down that new Blum, Blumente overlook. That got vandalized today or yesterday. Northeast Park, the Don Harbor, who was a very good friend of mine, sign got destroyed. Do we close Northeast Park? How come you have Seaco Annenberg? All these big parks out there where you can drive in, but this park, you can't get into it. You can't go anywhere up here. And you cannot let cross-country dominate this park. Cross-country happens for two or three months out of a year and that's it. And they only have one or two competitions possibly. So don't let vandalism ruin this. There are so many changes from back 30 years ago. Number one, back in the late eighties and nineties, if you remember, that's when we just got done with the transition of raising the drinking age. So people were still looking to go out and drink at 18. That doesn't happen as much anymore because everyone knows drinking age is 21. Back then, Arbor Heights was there. There may have been a few houses over here. There wasn't Miller Ranch. The park is now totally surrounded by houses. And I also want to point something else out. When this park came together, how many houses were out in that area? Does anyone know? One or two farmhouses and that was it. And they weren't even near where this is. The park was there before the neighbors. The neighbors can't decide what happened with the park because the park was there before they came. I know. I've got the original drawings for Arbor Heights. My great-grandfather did those. I have them in my basement. So don't let not opening a road so that people can actually get in and enjoy more of the park be based on vandals. Don't let it be judged on what happened 30 years ago. I imagine if you went back and looked financially, this is probably the cheapest park that you have in town as far as maintenance for its size. There hasn't been money invested in this park. If you've got to go invest $200,000 on a gate system, why not? You haven't invested anything else. I find it ironic, this ridge, this ravine bridge, I went back and looked through some of my records. 1966, master plan called for a bridge. 1966, and this is what? 2019? And we still don't have anything up there? For today, I would love to see the road open to the existing shelter. I would love to see us try this. Worst comes to worst, we shut the road down again. I would also like to recommend that we do the dawn to dusk. I would also like to recommend that maybe the road isn't opened a year round. Maybe during the winter, when people go out and try and do donuts in the snow. Shut the road down. Run it from April through November. You know, I think we're at some options that we're not looking at. But I would love to see the road. I would love to see the park expanded. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Brenda Vandy. I live at 3005 Cherry Hill. And there are two points that I'd like to make just to raise awareness. And that is that the road is accessible right now. Anyone can come and check out a key. Just as if I wanted to use a shelter at the Points Avenue Shelter, I have to make a reservation. These are public facilities that do require a level of reservation or access. And we have that process in place. We have the process in place where somebody can get a key. The road is open. And I can tell you as a person who lives near the park, that there have been weddings that have taken place down at the end of the long road that goes all the way towards the end. If we limit the parking area and put boulders in there, that's actually going to limit and restrict access all the way down to where we call it the Boy Scout path that connects. So I think the existing road actually gives greater access to people who want to use it for events. They check out a key, just like I need to reserve it for checking a shelter at Annenberg Park or Points Avenue Park. We also have multiple entry points now in that upper area that Debbie was talking about. We have a public easement off of Cherry Hill that is maintained by the city. People park along Cherry Hill. Neighborhood people walk in from Cherry Hill. We also have the pond area where people walk in from Miller Ranch as well. And, and in addition to that existing entry point. So the Warner Park Road, the parking lot area is not the only access point to that upper area where the meadow is. We actually have three entry points. So we have a lot of people walking in and accessing the park. It's not as if that upper area is inaccessible at all. It's been very accessible. So those are the two points I wanted to make, is that the upper area is accessible. The existing system is working, that people check out the key. They have access to the full length of that park for all sorts of events. And there's an accountability for that too, then, when people are checking out the key, that we know who's been in there. And it seems to have been working really well. We haven't had any problems with that. And in terms of access, like I said, we have multiple entry points where people are able to access the park. And as it's evolved over the years, in 50, 1950, when the park was created, there weren't any homes around it. But as the neighborhood has developed around there, the processes had to change. And it seems to be working really well as it is. So I encourage you to keep the road as it is with access to those with the key. So it's not, that it's not accessible, but it's accessible to those who go through the proper process of checking out a key.
Thank you. We, we don't ask questions of the briefer. You can submit those questions and we'll be glad to answer them later though.
Good evening. My name is Greg Spalding. I live at 3707 Bradford Terrace. I live on the park. First of all, I wanted to thank the city and I wanted to thank the park commission for, for the work that they do to preserve this, this park. It's a, it's an amazing park. And as in your literature, it says, it is a gem. It's primitive. It's a precious resource of open space. I think that's a great description of it. The master plan calls for maintaining it as a natural and rustic with minimum development. To me, having cars and roads through this precious resource goes against the objective of the master plan, to maintain it as a primitive, natural resource. It is beautiful how it is. I don't believe that adding roads and cars will make it any better. It will make it worse. It will destroy what is there in the natural beauty of this place. I like what the, I like what the parts have done, but I, but I am opposed to having a road in there. I would encourage you to maintain and restrict the access of cars to this, this beautiful, beautiful resource that we have in this, this great community. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rufus Vandy, the husband of Brenda. And I live at 3005 Cherry Hill. I want to make a few points concerning opening the park to cars. First, I want you to consider four things, and some of these have been touched on. The first of them, the first is the hours of operation. And being a natural park with, with the way it's designed, it's not like Annenberg Park and it's not like City Park and it's not like Seaco Park. Dawn to dusk, I think, if you are going to open it up, would be better than the 11 o'clock rule. Limiting, we talked a little bit about limiting the access because I know that people will drive into the prairie and tear it up because they did it before. So Alfonso touched on making sure there's some way to limit the cars if you decide to open it up so they can't get out in the prairie. I think we need to talk about why the vehicles were closed, why it was closed. And Chuck Reagan is a neighbor of mine, was a neighbor. He moved, so he can't be here tonight. But he has written letters and he has talked on numerous occasions. So I'm going to kind of talk on his behalf because he was a firsthand witness of what it was like. Now, I know Debbie said we can't be ruled by vandalism, but this park is different than other parks. So I'm going to just tell you what he told me and has written, what it was like. First of all, there was trash. They would go in there with their vehicles, carry in the beer, have their parties. Use needles. And if you're squeamish, cover your ears because there were used condoms. And you try to claim that when you're walking with your family, to your kids. It was so bad that they used sledgehammers to destroy shelters, the barbecue pits. There's those big cement picnic benches destroyed with sledgehammers, destroyed the bathrooms. That's what it was like. This is one of my real main concerns. If you can look here, as you come out of the parking lot, this is downhill coming down here. This is a blind turn. Almost every, the people that walk in the park almost always at least use part of their walk on the gravel road because it is the nicest place to walk. All the other trails are dirt and grass. And sometimes the grass doesn't get mowed. So almost everybody walks on this trail, families and kids, unaccompanied kids. As you come down here, that's a blind turn right there. And I can see some kids or family walking along here. Somebody's on the gravel road, likes to drive fast. They come around that corner. Bad things could happen. So at the very least, if you're going to open it, put a parallel, nice walking path gravel. So the people don't have to share the road with cars. I don't think there's another place where there's a prominent walking path in town that, that cars use at the same time people use. It just doesn't make sense. And I was going to talk about the key, but my wife didn't. Because it is open now. You just got to get a key. I see people down there. I saw a group of people I know. I was walking down the road and they were having a party there and they yelled out to me and they got a key and went down there and used it, just like anyplace else. And the last thing is, I talked to Alfonso a couple of days ago when we were talking about opening it up. And I was expressing my concerns about vandalism. And he said, quote, "People are different now." Remember you said that? Ironically, this is, the Manhattan Mercury dated November 19th. Blumente Hills New Overlook vandalized, $500 in damage to the letters, glass, wood, and sign. The problem with this park is it's so secluded. So that there's more of an opportunity in this park. And I think that's the basic problem, that it's different. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Bob Haynes. I live at 226 Fordham Road, and I've lived there 52 years this month. I've watched the park develop, and I've seen the problems that happened in the past and how they were solved. The main problems before was the vandalism coming up. They'd have the beer bus, and after they'd torn up all of the benches, then there was no place for them to sit, so they would go up to the neighbors and take porch furniture and take it down. And that got so bad that the RCPD, and I don't know if that, I think they were RCPD then, it was the police department anyway, they requested that the park, that the road be closed because when they'd go down to arrest somebody, they'd just run into the woods and they couldn't find them. When they closed it, then that sort of activity ceased. And I was trying to find, on the website today, I was looking to see the park board meeting of the 7th, and I'd been told that there was a video of it. Well, I couldn't, I'm very low tech. I couldn't make it work, couldn't get to see it. But I did read all of the descriptions of Warner Park, and it does it so much better than I can. It's a jewel. It's a one of a kind. It's not destroyed. It hasn't been destroyed yet. But if you open it up, people could park, the suggestion I would make is to have some sort of parking up at the top so people could park and walk in. That's what you do at Warner Park. You walk around on the trails. There's beautiful trails in there. Most of them built by Don Combs, and the Park Department furnished many, much of the materials. But when I look at those existing, the rockery gardens, I've walked that for 50 years, and it's glacial fill. And if you don't have lots of grass, that's what helps slow the water down. But those rockery gardens are good for about three years, or four years, or five years, then they're covered up. The bridge, we've always wanted a bridge around that, what I call the south end, the ravine bridge. The expense of that is just enormous. And with our sales tax down the tubes, I would think that money would be better spent on things that we really, that we really need. And why ruin a, this is beautiful. And I'm not just, well, I belong to the Kansas Native Plant Society, the Audubon Society. We've got conservation easements on our properties in the country. I don't think of myself as an environmentalist, but I sure, I can see if you take care of things, they last forever. And if you don't, you'll never get this back again. The City Park, what was it, 1857? I can remember as a kid, every four or five years, somebody wanted to build something new in the park. They were going to change it from this or that. Don't, you can't restore this once you ruin it. So I'm definitely against opening the road up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I truly had no intention of talking. I'm here on school assignment for observation, but I figured, why not? I live on Fort Riley, and I've never heard of this park ever in my life, and I think that kind of says something. It doesn't seem like it's super easily accessed. It seems really restrictive to, for me, to get a key to go visit this park. I can't speak about things that happened like 30 years before I was born, so I don't know any of that. But I know that I probably will never visit this park because it seems very difficult to get to, and to get a key to get on seems really restrictive. It seems great for neighbors that are able to walk onto the park, but for me, who has to drive 20 miles into town, doesn't seem very easy to get to. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Well, thanks for participating. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, well, we'll close public comment and come back to the commission for discussion.
I have a quick question. Is the gravel road that exists there now, was that also the original road that was there? Or was the original road paved and we, like, broke it up?
No, that's the original road from 1959. So the, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I'll go ahead and start my comments. To me, that's the exact point of, if we open up back that road, I wouldn't expect us to pave it or do any kind of additional work. So, I mean, if your concern is about preserving the nature of the park, then opening up the road doesn't change what's already been developed. It's the same. Now, I could understand maybe not wanting the road to go back all the way. So I'll just start my comments by saying, when we first discussed this plan, I'll be honest, I was somewhat, I appreciate everybody's public comments, and I think that your public comments are useful, and they have made me think about my positions. But I feel like we had a big case of NIMBYism here because the neighborhood fully dictated this master plan from the very start of its development. And I remember the very first night that we talked about this, I discussed opening up the road. I think I was the only commissioner who talked about opening up the road. And when I walked off the dais, there was a lot of negativity surrounding that. And so I feel like because we passed a master plan that eliminated the expansion of disc golf, we took around a lot of the other amenities that we had originally been planning, opening up the road to where option two, I believe, just pass the existing shelter is a good compromise, to where this becomes a little bit more of a park that's accessible by the community. And particularly, I actually think that this is a much bigger ADA issue than it is anything else. If I'm in a wheelchair or I have a disability, there's no way for me to enjoy any part of Warner Park in its current state, and that's an issue. That should be an issue that we are concerned about. And I think option two is a really good compromise between those two. It becomes a bit more ADA accessible so that if I want to enjoy shelter at Warner Park, I can do that without the road going all the way to the back. Because I could understand, at least for testing purposes for the time being, on why we would want to prevent that. To the gentleman's point about the blind turn, the last time I was walking around Warner Park, I didn't really pay attention to that. But if that is the case, I would want us to try to figure out a way for safety purposes that we could prevent that because it is largely used as a walking trail now, and that's 100% understandable to be an issue. But I think it is a good compromise for us to open up that road back to the shelter, find a way to block it off so they can't go any further. And if it doesn't work out and vandals come and plague our society yet again, we will just close the gate like we did before. I think this is what needs to happen. And to the point made just a little bit ago, when I was talking to a woman who actually lives only about two neighborhoods away from this park, who told me she never goes to Warner Park because she didn't think that there was a way to access it without walking by people's houses, like walking through the back of people's houses. Because she thought that all the access points had been closed off, and so there really wasn't a way in. And so I think it's 100% true that this has turned into a neighborhood park and not a community park, and we should do what we can to change that. But to the neighborhood's concerns, I could understand not wanting to open it all the way up, so I would be in favor of option two, to get us that shelter and make it a little bit more accessible. And I think that would be a good compromise all around for all of the things that have been pulled from this master plan that various community stakeholders have requested. So I think this is a good point of compromise.
I have been an advocate in the past for keeping this park closed. And, but I think it's time, after 50 years, to try to open it on a limited basis. And I basically agree with what Jared just said, that we try it, and if it doesn't work, we close it again. I am not interested in building a bridge, given the costs and the expenses that we have elsewhere in the city. I'm not supportive of that. I'm sorry about that particular trail and where it does or doesn't go, but we can't be, at this, unless the, in 10 years, we might be able to, but right now, I don't believe we can't, or should, should afford a bridge there. I agree with not paving the road. I want to keep it as natural as possible. I don't want to encourage more heavy use. I like the idea of the limestone boulders or blocks that help guide, would guide traffic down to that area. I'd certainly want some picnic benches. I'm not, I don't know about whether, are you planning to replace the picnic shelters or just leave the ones there?
So the shelters that are there now, I mean, they're fairly sturdy unless you take a sledgehammer to them.
No, no, no.
But, no, we would look into, for sure, put in, you know, a grill or something that was there before. There is a bench and seating there now, so we look at implementing. Essentially, I think that would be our first phase, would make it, you know, bring it up to speed, you know, give it some care, and then to make it a destination.
I just don't think it has to be brand new and glitzy and expensive.
Yeah.
I think as we try this, let's put some picnic benches under the shelters, and like you said, maybe a grill or two. But I don't expect us to, I want to try it, and I don't want to have a lot of money invested in it in case we have to pull back. So I've basically changed my position. I'm willing to compromise with this limited access. And I believe that it, I think we do have an interest in making sure that there's no vandalism out here as best we can. And so I'm not going to buy the part about, oh, well, maybe we can find a gate, or we need to find a way if we want to close this park at a certain time in the evening and make it dependable.
Now, I wanted to stay focused a little bit on the budget end of this. This is a master plan. So what we're voting on tonight here is not to fund a road or new park benches or anything else. It just means that the intent is to eventually do that. And that might not happen for a couple of years based on our budget constraints. So, you know, that's where I'm at. I mean, a master plan is basically the ideal state where you want to be in some future, and that could be 10 years out. And unfortunately, this could wind up like the bridge that was mentioned because there is no, there is no money for it. And so based on that, you know, if there was a monetary price tag on this tonight, I might look at it differently. But I understand it's just a master plan, and hopefully, you know, with Eddie's great management of the park system, this will eventually get put in place in some fashion with the details. But I'm inclined to go with the, you know, recommendation of the, you know, Park Board, which is option two, which Commissioner McKee also supported. And that seems to, that seems to make sense because it's a compromise. And then when this does get implemented, then you can work out all the details on, you know, how do you handle access, closure times, vandalism? You got to put boulders there, gates. I mean, all that is, of course, absolutely have to be dealt with.
Yeah, I think it's time we did something different there. I think, you know, the whole conversation last few times revolved around disc golf, and that kind of upended all kinds of other discussions as far as the master plan. It's time to open up the gate, go with option B, and like Commissioner Butler was saying, chances are most of these will not be fully implemental, implemented for two or three years from now, if not longer. The costs will change even by then, even if we had a cost estimate today, it would probably change in the next three to four years. But I think it's good to have more people use it, give it some more access to individuals. I don't know how many people have access to key, or if they even know a key exists. I know when I go to parks, I don't think about, maybe I should call and ask for a key. I wouldn't even know that's what you would need for that unless I was having some kind of an event. I know most of the other parks where we have events, they don't require a key of some kind. But I think we should go with the plan that's been advised by the Parks and Rec Board. I like the idea of boulders and all of this. I think the restrooms are key right now, all the discussions we've had in the past. And I think the intent was to have it be accessible for the community to use. And maybe police enforcement would also play a big role in that discussion in the next few years as we discuss how to maintain that area and not have vandalism. I think vandalism is something we can control to a certain extent. Yes, it just happened a few days ago, and things like that will happen in a variety of places. Our job is to control it as much as possible, but also be respectful of the neighborhood that is surrounding that area. But we certainly want more people to enjoy our parks at the same time.
I have one question first. It's probably in there, but I didn't read it. But what are we, is there a plan in there for invasive species? When we talked about this at first, you know, we've got plants on the other side of this. Well, you know, there's birds and things that live in there. So what's the outcome of that?
Yeah, we were, so back in 2002, they created a 10-year plan, which talked about that, about the invasive species out here, so the honeysuckle and the red cedar. We went back to that plan and are going to continue to incorporate those practices. I know here on the northeast side, I believe last year, our parks crews came in and sprayed the honeysuckle. And now it's nice and open. And so I think we're going to continue that to keep those trails open because, I mean, that honeysuckle is really, really pushes towards those trails, and it's one of our, really one of our, one of the species that really hinders trails throughout the community. And so that's something we're going to push for. As far as red cedar, red cedars, I mean, you know, there's, we would do some select removal of the cedars, but I think a lot like what was incorporated for Roger Schultz, it's not going to be to that extent, but there's definitely ways that we could continue combating that.
I guess I've got a slightly different view. When we started this, access to me, when I went out to visit this a couple of times, was restricted simply because we didn't have adequate parking. You know, whether you're on the northeast or the, whatever you call it, the east side there up above Target, or you're on the west side down in the south, where you've driven by people's homes already, there's just a little tiny parking lot. So if people are dissuaded from the use of the park, it's largely due to, I don't have any place to park. Now, secondarily, you have to ask yourself, what are you accessing? What is it I'm doing when I go there? And to me, this is a little bit like a European park where you go to walk. You might envision benches along the side so you can sit and rest or contemplate whatever you want to do. But other than that, you know, what is there to do? You're not going there to the swimming pool. You're not going there to play tennis. This is a different kind of park. And I just, the part that is owners, once you take that gate off, then it's done. You're going to ask the RCPD to do it, you're going to ask the Parks and You're going to ask the RCPD to do it, you're going to ask the Parks and Rec, well, why don't you just send a guy up there to close that boom at, uh, at sundown? I mean, these are all expenses that we don't want. The, as some people pointed out, we already have access. All you have to do is go to the city website and get the, get the key if you want some kind of an event, a wedding or some, a Boy Scout event up there. That's what the place is made for. You know, we don't contemplate having hordes of people go around. That's not what it's for. It's a quiet place where there's birds and animals and so on that you can walk through. So I don't like either one or two. I just want to keep the thing the way it is. So any further discussion?
When I was walking out there, when we were first talking about this disc golf thing, it took me an incredibly long time even just to find where the disc golf course was at. So I think it's pretty easy still to get lost in those woods regardless if there's a car or two at the shelter. So I'll make a motion, uh, Mayor, I move that we approve the Warner Memorial Park Master Plan dated November 2019 as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which proposes opening Warner Park Road to the extent shown in option two.
I'm going to second. You should, I'm sorry. Third.
All right, roll the roll, please.
Commissioner McKee?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Dotson?
No.
Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
I guess yes.
Motion carries four to one.
I would like to make a request. As many times as we have revisited the Warner Park, uh, master plan and these discussions and how, uh, I believe it will be important that in the future, we're able to look back at this evening's discussion. And I would like for the minutes to show the discussion items and what we considered rather than just say that the city commission, we, we see the points from all the citizens, but we don't see the, the detail of the commissioner's, uh, uh, positions. So I can't even look back to see what I did. I'd have to, and after six months, the cable, uh, view is gone. So, uh, I'd like for that to be more, uh, more comprehensive minutes that we can look back and, and see where we stood, uh, future commissioners, because it'll come up again.
Mayor, could we?
We have the technology for that kind of thing. When we take minutes, I mean, we've got a recording, obviously, but.
Sure. We, it, it hasn't been our practice, but we can certainly examine it.
Mayor, can we take like a quick five-minute break? This was a pretty long presentation and it's 9:30. We've been at this for two and a half hours.
Maybe we'll just make you sit here for it. All right, well, we'll take a five-minute breaks. Thanks, everybody.
I was peeing. Oh, I.
Thank you for everything. Keep me informed.
I don't know if you know this, but I'm an excellent landlord who has driven off apartment and district for 40 years. Um, I don't know, but it's that I'm very 65, 40 years a year. I get some of those problems. Thank you for good.
There's a, there's a.
K drive.
I worked.
New meeting slides. There we go. What are we, in recess?
Yeah.
Is that in the, uh?
It's called K drive and it's called.
What's it called?
It's called.
Try new meeting slides.
There we go. What are we, in recess?
Yeah.
Is that in the?
It's called K drive and it's called.
What's it called?
It's called.
Try new meeting slides.
There we go. What are we, in recess?
Yeah.
Is that in the?
It's called K drive and it's called.
What's it called?
It's called.
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 All right, we'll come back in session. It's 20 minutes to the hour and we're on item C. This is a discussion item. It'll be the overview of the Manhattan Rental Housing Forum held on October 27th, discussion on improving the tenant landlord relationship and other issues related to rental housing. And it's Marshall Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased to be before you tonight, talking about a topic that you have been talking about for the past several months. And it's an opportunity that you've kind of directed us to really engage the community around the issue of rental housing and even thinking about our inspection services that we provide through our risk reduction services in the Manhattan Fire Department. And so tonight, we do have Assistant Chief Ryan Courtwright with us tonight. He can answer some questions if you have some as our presentation goes on. And as well, we have some members of the Kansas State Student Government Association with us tonight, who will join me at the end of this presentation. And so what I wanted to highlight for you was that the city commission, um, directed the city staff to do some engagement throughout the city to understand what the landlord-tenant relationship is and some of the resources available. And so we worked in partnership with the Student Government Association at Kansas State and we held a rental housing forum on October 29th on the K-State campus in the K-State Student Union. And the goals of the, um, forum were pretty simple, really to understand the landlord and tenant perspectives on rental issues in Manhattan, as well as raise awareness about resources that are available to enhance the tenant landlord relationship. And the agenda basically for the evening, we, um, had a speaker about enhancing the landlord-tenant relationship from the Housing and Credit Counseling Incorporated organization. We also had a understanding, the City Rental Inspection Service, which was presented by Assistant Chief Courtwright. We also did some unique information to gather some renter surveys and some landlord surveys to really get a sense of their perspective of how they view the relationship in Manhattan. And so we presented some survey data, clearly not scientific data or, um, fully representative, but it's a good snapshot of some information I don't think that we've had in the community for a while. And then, um, I think the highlight of the evening was having a panel discussion with two renters and two landlords. And they really gave their on-the-ground perspective of how they view the relationship in Manhattan. And then we wanted to end with what the goal was, is to provide more resources in the community. And so we had the opportunity for those who attended the forum to be at round tables and have discussions around different resources, whether it be if you're at Fort Riley, there's a representative from the Off Base Housing at Fort Riley. Kansas State had their off, um, campus housing staff there. We had the Housing and Credit Counseling, uh, staff there, the fire risk reduction staff there. So it's a good opportunity to get some more resources in the evening. And so one of the highlights, as we said, is the Assistant Chief Courtwright did a presentation which you all had gotten back in March about our rental inspection service or program. We talked about the rental registration program for landlords, which we highlighted, you see on your screen there, with, um, it being enacted in 2017. It really collects the names and addresses of the landlords. Also, we have some of the mile radius by if you're not a landlord in that radius, you need to have a representative and some of the other features of the program. We also went through what is not covered in the rental registration program and some of the things that are, such as the fraternities and sororities. As we highlighted back then, the recent numbers from the rental registration program is there currently are 13,387 dwelling units registered in the program from 1,800 owners, which represent about 4,800 actual addresses in the community. And so also we highlight that our risk reduction department is doing the registration violations, but that could be for some of the code enforcement services related to yards, landscaping, but also the housing violations. And then even how they, uh, implemented one court action. Also, we wanted to highlight what was maybe something that's not required in the rental program so people could understand again, our intent was to provide information to the community to make sure everyone had the basis of information as they consider the tenant landlord relationship. What was, I think I said, the highlight was Kansas State Student Government Association helped put together a survey for renters, really targeting, you'll see, the K-State population, but also the faculty and staff, who really do make up some of the bulk renters in our community. And then we did the landlord survey as well, that we administered through the landlord database. And so what I want to highlight for you now is the, uh, information that K-State gathered from the renter community. And you'll see there are 143 respondents, 60 were students and about the other half, there were 59 that were staff members. So keep that in mind as you think about some of the data that we go through here. Um, again, some of the students were older, juniors and seniors, then you see the breakdown by male, female. We asked a couple, basically 17 questions on the survey that, um, they responded to and really says, how many times have you rented? So we could get an understanding of what the feedback was coming from, if they've been a first-time renter, or as you see, a majority of them there had rented three or more times to give us some feedback. Also, what we asked is, what do they base their final decision for the rental unit that they're currently in? And so, or how, how do they find it? And so websites are clearly the top interest of how they connect to the unit that they're looking at. Um, we did find out that no one, so that they're utilizing the city of Manhattan's risk reduction website of information. Um, and then there are other sources that people, um, found on their own. And then it also said, kind of considering, are people just looking at one unit and taking it? Are they looking at multiple units? Kind of what is their due diligence as they're doing their process? And as you see, several of them, at least four, 38 of the respondents, looked at four or more of the units and before they selected their final one. Here's the number one concern. We talked about what is a decision factor that goes into the renters in Manhattan from this sample? And so price matters. Price was the number one issue as to how people found their housing in Manhattan for this group. Then also you look at, the second one was overall condition. They kind of made an assessment, is this the overall condition I want to live in? We asked a simple question, do you read your lease agreement? And 89% of the respondents said, yes, they do. So we thought that was important to make sure that people are understanding how they go in to the tenant landlord relationship with the lease being the basis of that. Also, we asked, do they do a walkthrough and are things documented when they go through the walkthrough? And so, um, some said yes, and it's documented, 60%. They said yes, but it was not documented for 12% of those, and then no for 28 of the respondents. What we also found out, and this was in a headline after the forum in the Manhattan Mercury, where the respondents of these renters said they did not know that the city had a rental inspection service or that you could call and require or ask a free inspection. So that was a eye-opening, I think, for me and for some of the students there and other renters. Then we kind of went into, how do they view the unit that they currently live in? 75% of them that they're extremely or somewhat satisfied. And there are also 11 respondents or 8% that were extremely dissatisfied. So you can kind of get a sense of, people generally like the unit that they're in. And then we said, well, do you feel safe in your unit? And so, uh, do you feel your current rental unit is unsafe is the key question, unsafe to live in? And 85% said, no, it's not unsafe. And then we looked at code violations. So have they ever felt uncomfortable calling the code enforcement office or submitting a service request to the landlord? And so 83% said, um, no, they did not feel uncomfortable. And so I think that's a good sign that people in our community are willing to speak up if they have some issues with their property. And then, um, the issue that we have in Manhattan about the four or more unrelated occupants in a dwelling, um, we wanted to ferret that out a little bit more. So we asked, have you ever been willing to ignore some poor rental conditions in order to have more roommates not listed on the lease? And so we found that, um, 89 of them said no, 11 said yes. Um, but also we did not isolate the students versus the faculty and staff who did that, um, response. And then we talked about the communication. What would prohibit you from raising any housing concerns with your landlord? And really, you see, the high rate, 36, 7, said nothing would prohibit them from raising some issues. There was a fear of landlord retaliation eviction. We've heard that concern in the community. We don't know how anecdotal that is, but we have a bit more information. And then one fear was they'd have to move if they raised a concern with their unit. And then we said the actual landlord retaliation. We wanted to know if those who took the survey had a firsthand knowledge of some We wanted to know if those who took the survey had a firsthand knowledge of someone either themselves or someone they knew being retaliated against. And 25% said yes, they had had that experience or knew of that experience firsthand. 75% said no. And then we said, let's get at the heart of this, is I think a key factor is, would you recommend your unit or your landlord, basically, after you've been through that experience? And so we asked the question, would you recommend the unit? Would you recommend the landlord? Would you recommend the landlord and the unit? Or neither? And so you can kind of see the results there, were 48% of those survey respondents, so they would recommend the unit and the landlord. So it kind of gives you a little perspective of how they are looking at their relationship. And so what we saw, talking with K-State, some of their key renter takeaways, is that websites are a commonly-used tool for rental property. That's how people go and find basically their main resources. And when we talk about resources, the website seems to be it. Renters care more about price and condition than location. We wondered if location would rise or not. And then the vast majority, as we highlighted, don't know that Manhattan has the voluntary rental inspection program. And then again, 25% witnessed the landlord retaliation.
Before you move on, who took this survey? Was it the people who came to the forum? Or was it different?
No, this was beforehand. SGA sent it out. It was in KSU Today was one of the forums, SGA's network of social media and other things. So it was student-promoted and K-State administration-promoted.
Did they gather any demographics when they did that?
We got the year in school, male, female, and faculty-staff.
Okay.
See, I can give you some more of the detailed background on all that. But yeah, generally, it was K-State generated through a couple of their communication vehicles. So then on the flip side, we went to the landlord. And we used, again, the landlord database of 1,800 emails. And from that, looking at the demographics, we got back 129 responses. And we asked if they were actually the property owners, or if they worked for a property management company, or if they worked for a real estate company with property management, to kind of really get down to some of the demographics of who is replying back to us. And so 107 of them are the actual physical property owners. And then we asked to get a sense of how much they work with these units. And so we wanted to know how many units they had. And so we said 0 to 5, 6 to 10, 11, 25, and on. And so 64% of the respondents have five or less units. And so as I described that, is we really see the Manhattan rental market, it's what I consider mom-and-pop run. It's not their full-time business necessarily, it's maybe some side income, but it kind of gives you a perspective of how they're approaching their rental units. Also, we want to know, how long have they been landlords? Also, the number of units, but how long? And 38% have been landlords for 16 years plus. And then you also see 34 respondents for 0 to 5. So it gives you a little sense there to the spectrum of how long. Then we also asked, what is the makeup of their tenant? We offered a couple categories, but the majority, 53%, were KSU students. Not surprising. And then we asked the landlords, when they have a vacancy or open unit, how do they advertise? We talked about social media, signs in front, newspaper, word-of-mouth, and so you can kind of see how those numbers shook out. But basically, 60% use a website or social media. We also wanted to understand about kind of the affordability issue. If you can't make the down payment or the security deposit, how does that start your path to housing stability? And so we asked about different ranges of deposits. And so the 75% charge one-months' rent. And then 14%, the second highest, was anywhere between 301 to 600, but that also could equal one-month's rent. So if you put those two together, that'll give you a sense. Then we also wanted to see the backside of that. When we hear about the tenant landlord relationship, a lot of times, people think it goes sour. And so people don't get their safety deposit back, or security deposit back, or cleaning fee, or whatever, damage deposit. And so 68% of landlords say they almost always have returned the security deposit.
Did we ask that same question to the tenants?
That one, we did not.
What is my, what is my incentive to tell you that I, as a landlord, to tell you that I didn't return part of the security deposit? Other than just being nice and honest?
Like any survey. Any survey. And then we asked again, so this was on the flip side, we asked about the renters, and if they went through and did a walkthrough. We asked the landlords, and they said, yes, they do a walkthrough. So it was very similar in that regard. And then we also talked about, some people say the term slum landlords, they're not maintaining their units, we think the conditions aren't up to standard. And so we really kind of wanted, again, to get just what their impression was. And we gave them a range of how many dollars they spent annually to maintain each individual unit, not just as a whole. And so you see the responses there, about 58%, you take the last two columns there, spent more than $1,000 per unit per year. And some reported they spent more than $1,500. That could be a new stove, that could be a cleaning service, that could be new windows, it could vary. But it at least says overall that the landlords are telling us they are investing some amount in their unit each year. And then we said, are there more renters in the unit than on the lease? And the landlords said, 75%, no, there's not. Again, trying to get at the four or more kind of question. And I think you see the similar between what the students said and what the landlord said. And then we wanted to just kind of get a sense, are renters being evicted? And so we asked over the last two years, how many have they evicted? And it said, 67% had not had to evict or terminate in the last two years anyone from their units. And they had some others who didn't want, and whatever, but here's the reasons why. And basically, 84% of the renters were evicted for failure to pay rent. And so that was the leading indicator, but you see some others, property destruction, illegal activity, whatever it may be. But the primary one was failure to pay. And then we also wanted to get a sense, to give you all and the city folks, some idea of how people view the Manhattan rental market, knowing some of the changes with deployment with Fort Riley and with K-State enrollment. And so the landlord's view is that 87% said the Manhattan rental market is struggling or weak. And then we asked, the overall quality of rental units to city code. This is what they overall, how they perceive their fellow landlords in our entire community in terms of up to city code. And they said about 73% they think of the units in Manhattan are good or excellent, according to city code. That is their view of the overall city. Here's their view of their specific individual properties. 98% of them said that their own individual properties as related to city code are either good or excellent. So again, you can take that for how they view their following of city code. So then we asked one, again, another general question we thought the Commissioner might be interested in, is are there populations in our community who may have difficulty finding sufficient rental housing, based upon some type of barrier? Whether it be they're elderly, have intellectual disabilities, physical disabilities? And we also gave the option for the landlords, could all those barriers be an issue in our community? Or could none of those barriers be, meaning they think everyone can find suitable housing in our community? 33% said renters with certain circumstances may have difficulty finding a unit in our community. Again, not scientific, but it gives a flavor of how landlords are viewing the market. And here's the key landlord takeaways. Landlords are on social media, this is where we think is a good place to build the tenant- landlord relationship. Landlords are investing in their properties each year. Nearly 70% have not evicted or canceled leases. 66% have concerns of the local rental market. 73% say the housing quality is good or excellent. And 97% think that their units are good or excellent. So then, kind of the overall, I'll invite Jansen Penny, the Student Government President at K-State, and Justin Watkins, the Student Chair of the SGA Intergovernmental Relations Committee, to come up and join me and give you their perspective as an overview. But we have on here kind of the overall panel forum and takeaways. When we had the panel discussion, there was some robust conversation. And I do want to, again, thank K-State for their partnership and collaboration on this forum, for the Student Government to work hand-in-glove with us and help, I think, it provided for a more robust forum and input. And I think we all walked away better for it. And I think these are the takeaways that Justin can talk about, and he has some proposals from the K-State perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. So as you can see here, property management is consistently changing hands. The Manhattan rental property don't appear to have a large presence on the internet and resources are lacking for tenants. Other communities and universities have other resources and are easier to find. KSU doesn't provide adequate services for off-campus housing. We do have an off-campus resource, student worker who works 10 hours a week. That has kind of been in question about how adequate that is. The city needs to do a better job highlighting its rental inspection service. As was shown in that survey, 75% of people didn't know that we had a rental inspection program. The city should consider some type of language requirements and lease addendums about inspection services and laws against landlord retaliation. And so we'll kind of talk about that. So one of the big emphases that I've had in my time as GR Chair is working to help students who live off-campus have the resources that they need with, from the university and from the city. And so that kind of started with working with Dennis to do this Off-Campus Housing Summit. And, you know, according to the survey, the vast majority of respondents weren't aware of that rental inspection program. And from personal experience, I can say that the majority of students also aren't aware that K-State has an off-campus housing support employee, and that our student legal services can review leases. So moving forward, my committee will be advocating to increase the resources of Off-Campus Housing Support Office, and we'll start with updating, increasing, and making it easier for students to find information on the K-State website. A lot of the information on there right now is outdated, it's kind of hard to find, so we're going to work to improve that as well. But in addition to that, and you guys all, I think, have been handed one of these proposals, but we'd like to see the creation of a landlord-tenant advisory committee, which is very similar to some other schools. Marquette, for example, has a similar program. And basically, this advisory committee would be established through the City of Manhattan, just as, you know, a number of other advisory committees are. And they would have the job of addressing pertinent issues facing concerned parties. Some of these things would be, you know, the landlord-tenant communication aspect, the distribution of city and university information resources, identifying kind of current trends and seeing what can be done about those, and making recommendations to the city on issues pertinent to renting. So the, as far as what I kind of have as a proposal, there would be four student rentals- renters, two faculty renters, one to two fixed-income renters, four to six landlords, one city official, one code inspector who can kind of give that perspective to them, a K-State administrator, and then the GR Chair and the Local Relations Director from SGA would serve as ex-officio members. And you can kind of see the other information. So this is just kind of a rough idea, something that could be done to get the landlord and renters' perspectives, so that we can have them address, you know, the people who are currently living off-campus and have those issues, so that they can be the people that are leading that discussion. In addition to that, I would also propose that a clause be added to leases, which informs renters about the voluntary rental inspection program. As was stated in the survey, I think it was 89% of renters read their leases in its entirety. By adding this small clause, the number of people in Manhattan who are aware of the program will be greatly increased.
And overall, really just to add on that, I think we all can agree that there are areas to improve. There are areas to improve on the K-State side, on the city side, as us, like me being a renter as well, and being more informed as a student renter, as a faculty renter. And so really finding out what those next steps are, and I think here are very two great, two great options that we can look at as far as moving that, moving that conversation forward. Right now, we're down a couple thousand students at K-State. Hopefully, that's not the case here in another three or four years. And there are a lot of places where students can get that housing. As that, as that market changes, as we get more students, and maybe as that landscape kind of traverses back into a very landlord-dominated space, then I think it's going to be really important that we have all of these set up and ready to go, so that students can, students, faculty-staff, and community members as well, can utilize all these different resources that the city does provide, that was shown in these surveys, that a lot of people do not know about, to their advantage, so that all of us can have safe and affordable housing here in the Manhattan community.
Good. You guys stay put a minute, I'm sure folks have questions and comments.
So a year and a half ago, I hosted, me personally, a forum about housing issues. And we came out of that with two proposals for the City Commission, one for rent, two potential proposals to consider, one for rental inspections and one exactly what you're proposing tonight, adding a page in the lease for people to sign, acknowledge they know the rental inspection program. During that time, those SGA reps went back to SGA, and you passed a resolution for rental inspections, but you did not for the other one. So is this a change in policy with the new administration? And is what you're proposing, have you passed that in a resolution, or are you going to?
No, we have not passed that in a resolution. A lot of this has been, has been brainstormed and from Justin's committee and takeaways from the forum that we just had. And speaking to our pass, our passage of that resolution in last year's SGA about a rental inspection program, that is something that I believe we would still be on board for, but, but really, most importantly, we want progress. If we can't make progress in that area, then we can't make progress in that area, and let's look to somewhere else to do that. I think that adding, adding in, adding a mandated addendum into some of these leases is a very important next step to doing that, something that might have more consensus, something that would take less taxpayer dollars. And really, I hope that that is one of these smaller, smaller chunks that we can take a buyout of to create a positive change in this field.
I agree with you, and I appreciate your answer. And that's, that's essentially what I wanted to know, is was this a total change of policy or more of trying to reach a middle ground? Because the Commissioners can interpret it either way. And so I wanted to hear from you what the reason for that was. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Turned that off for a reason. Got just a couple of things that I'd like to ask you about. You know, I was a little bit surprised at the, when we did the panel. I mean, it was a great panel. The whole thing was done very well, but some of the answers surprised me. And what we're searching for, I think all of us, are kind of what are the reasonable solutions that we can apply here? So the second bullet up there is not something that I'm familiar with. In other words, I don't go online and look at rental housing. So when the, I think she was the Assistant Professor in English, when she said this, when she'd come from, I think Jacksonville, if I remember, and she said, you know, kind of how it was down there, and she lived in a Elizabethan house and had, I think, either four or five roommates and so on. And she came up here and she said, well, I was having a hard time, because the sources that I had used, had been used to using, weren't available here or didn't use the same things. So, I mean, is this like a Google search, or what is it we're, we're used to doing to find rental housing?
So I think she specifically mentioned that she used Craigslist. And that when she came here, she had rented in a variety of places, I think five different major cities, Manhattan being the smallest of the five, that Craigslist wasn't as utilized here. I think overall, though, there is a good amount of information on the internet, it's just where the potential renters are getting that information. And from the survey that we sent to students, faculty, and then some community members at large, they were not getting their information from either the Kansas State University website or from the city website.
So you mentioned earlier, you thought by doing something on the KSU website, you could fix part of this. And then I assume we'll have to have some kind of a link on the city website. And I'm just, again, because I don't do that, I have to assume that this is easily done with a link, is that?
So that is part of the issue. One of the things that we had talked about in my committee meeting yesterday was seeing how plausible it would be to get, you know, an extension from the main website when you click on student life. The other thing is, a lot of that information on there, I didn't find until I spent, you know, a long time searching the website. You can't find it from a Google search. Talking specifically about K-State's resources, and it's outdated. It hasn't been updated, it doesn't have the new employees' information. But that is just stuff that needs to go in and get, get updated, and that'll happen.
Yeah. And to add on to that as well, K-State as a whole, it does not have a lot of incentive to be really up-to-date on keeping all those up-to-date and providing a lot of different resources for off-campus housing, and there's a few reasons for that. K-State offers their own, like, off-campus housing. And then two, looking at liability of that and making sure that, that we are being as careful as possible and mitigating our risk as well. You know, because if we go in and start posting all the links to some of the largest landlords in town, some of that can start coming back on, or could possibly come back on K-State, of K-State's promotion, of that, of that site, of that landlord. And so we're really trying to- And so we're really trying to, trying to reach out with the most resources as possible while still maintaining our liability. I don't think it's a balance that we found, and we need to do a lot better with that as well. And then, speaking to your previous point about finding information online, I think, I think what a lot of people do, not as much of a Google search, is looking up the, the websites to those three to five largest tenants or largest landlords that are in town. A lot of that, I think, comes from word of mouth, who, when I, when I started renting here in town, I asked my older friends who, like, different places that they looked at. And I know just, just today, I signed on a, on a house as well, and the way we got that was, we just looked up their landlord's site and looked at all their, all their different listings, opened up a new tab, looked at a different landlord. So we really only ventured out to four or five different sites that had a lot of different listings. And, and so maybe that is a lot harder for people who are coming fresh into the community and don't have some of those resources, and something as general as Craigslist that adds all this information on it.
One of the things we struggled with a couple of years ago is how to make an impact in, you know, on the new renter. And one of the things that we discovered, and I guess I should have thought of this, but once someone comes here to enroll, more than likely, they've already made that rental decision. So mom and dad or the, you know, the student themselves have taken action that's now largely irreversible, at least for the first year or whatever the lease period is. So is there a realistic way, I mean, if, if we fix both of these websites, is there a realistic expectation that when someone is looking for rental property as a forerunner to enrollment, do you, do you think we can achieve something there by just fixing the website, or is there another methodology that...
I think one of the better plausible ways that that could come to fruition a little bit easier is, is after they, they are here, and especially for a lot of students living in the residence halls as well, to start getting that information from their RAs starting in October through December. Because that's honestly when a lot of people are making their choices of where they're going to live in, in August, who they're going to live with, and really signing all those leases. I think, I think that is, that is doable, as long as we're very careful about what resources are, are shared through those RAs, which is the residents, assistants who live in the on-campus housing, I will, I will add.
That take, for me, that takes care of some of it, but if every, if every freshman lived in, on campus, that would be perfect. Because in other words, the RA would be able to give, have them for a year, and then they would have information with which as a sophomore, they could go out and make a more enlightened decision. But the freshman who comes in and goes directly into rental housing is the catch that I'm trying to connect here. Is, is that just largely left then to fix in websites so that the information's available? I mean, when a, when a student applies for admission before the enrollment, is there some possibility of including some information on where they might live? It just seems to me this is part of the KSU experience. I mean, it's not only academics and sports and quality of life, and it's where you live ought to be tucked in there somewhere.
Yeah, I know that, that kind of brings to mind, I know after you're, you know, accepted and admitted, they do give you a long checklist of different things that you need, you need to do. And I know that K-State's working on trying to keep that checklist as short as possible because we want to retain as many students before they actually get here on campus and are confirmed. But I think that, I think that could be an, like, a step as well. And then I will add as well, there is some very serious consideration in freshman mandatory living on campus too, which would really help us out in that dispersion of information once they are here on campus.
One of the other things, and maybe Katie, you can chime in here, but when we did JALUS, for example, there's a piece in there that we wanted to include formally on noise. And so in the deed process, that's in there. So my question is, if we wanted to include the Landlord Tenant Act or something about access to Code Office and that kind of thing, is that something that we can have done? Or are we relatively limited in what we can ask for?
You mean in terms of, in the lease, when you say included? I think if that's something the commission wants to explore, there are various ways that we can require notice, whether it's through a lease or a posting, but we'll have to bring back several options, and it might be as part of the rental registration program, because we'll have to establish whether there's a penalty for not doing that, how we're going to enforce it, and all kinds of elements there. And there are different ways that cities require notice that don't necessarily mean attachment to a lease. So, so if that's something the commission's interested in, there would be alternatives we could return to you.
Thank you.
To your point, Mayor, I was one of those renters when I came here at K-State. In all fairness, housing was much more competitive in 2010. When I started, the dorms were completely full, that's why I had to find off-campus housing. But you're, you're right, when I came up here, I hadn't signed a lease yet, but I had made a decision, and they were holding a spot for me. I paid a hundred-dollar deposit, and at that point, it was too late. Like, I was, I had to sign the lease, like, I had nowhere else to live if I didn't. And so I do think that that is an issue, and maybe I, I can understand the legal liability of posting, like, "Here is landlord A, and there are an approved landlord." But maybe even just communicating, again, when I, when every time I rented, I found almost all of my rentals from Craigslist. But it has changed quite rapidly now to where a lot of the rentals are just listed on things like Zillow. And if I'm a student who's never rented, I probably think something like Zillow is, or Realtor.com is just if I want to buy a house. So even if it's just communicating things like that, that you find out via landlords that, you know, actually, we're doing, you know, 90% of our postings just on Zillow or just on Realtor.com, then those are things that you communicate, because then at that point, you're not advocating one is better or worse, you're just saying, "This is a place where they're all housed now." And I have seen that change over a period of time. So that might be one additional thing that you just think about.
Thank you, Commissioner McKee.
Yeah, I've got probably four points that, you know, because I, because I agree, I think we need to improve what we've got. We've got a rental registration program, and it's got some holes in it. And the first thing I would do, and these would be action items for the city, and there's probably three things that, that we could do here at the commission rather rapidly. And one is, like Katie said, take the idea of notice and penalties, and somehow or other attach an addendum to the lease, or however it can legally be done, and require that everybody sees the inspection program. Because I think that, that's vital. Because if there is a problem, this is an easy way to address the problem with the least amount of expense. So that's got to be in there. And then the other thing that was enlightening was reading the details of the Kansas Tenant Landlord Act, and the fact that if a landlord does retaliate, which a lot of students say they do, it's illegal. And the students need to know that, and that needs to be clearly outlined. So those are the, the two things that I think we need to add to our rental registration program, is that we have clear-cut, clear-cut notification of those things to anybody that is renting in town. The idea of a landlord advisory committee, I, I think we could also, you know, add another committee, that's not a problem. I like the concept, but I wouldn't agree with all the details here, because this has got to be constructed so that it's community-wide, and this is too student-heavy. You know, because we got military, we got other people, so I would, I would want to have further discussions on that. And then a real clearly-defined purpose, you know, so that, okay, this is the mission of the board, and you did a pretty good job on that. But one of the things that comes to mind is, these folks might find themselves in the middle of being arbitrators, and then we want to make clear where that is. So, so I think the, the concept, the city should explore that, that's going to take a little bit more work than, than the first two. And then the last one would be something for KSU to handle, and that's the, the off-campus housing, and that's really the website discussion that we had. And I think there's various ways to, to make that work. I did a lot of stuff on online things for Barton Community College years ago. And there is ways to enhance your web search, you got to invest a little bit of money, but, but there's ways to manipulate that so that it comes up. And when new students come in, as the mayor suggested, you know, when they get that little, you're enrolled at K-State, there should be a little housing thing that says, "Go to some links," and it can be set up, so you don't have that liability. Like, what came to mind for myself, and I know that some people might have trouble using this, but as part of our registration program, we put a map together, and it has every rental property, and, and you can see where it is in the city, and you click on it, and it tells you who owns it and whatever. I would think that'd be a useful link, because, you know, if I was a student coming in, I'd want to know, okay, where's the campus? Okay, where are the various properties? And you could search it, and then you could see what's there, and then that would give you an idea. You could say, "Well, I like this area here, where's three rental properties? Let me check those." And now, some of those, as the data showed, could be owned by an individual. Like, you know, there's a few people that own like one rental house or two, and they're going to be hard to find on, on these big websites. So you might pick those, and you might see one that's, you know, a big one, you know, like the lofts or something like that, and that, that I'm sure would be out there. And so that would be a challenge for whoever does that, but I see the, the lead person in that being the K-State, you know, off-campus housing office, and they'd be able to link to the resources the city has. And so those are the, the four action items I think we should do, and, and most of these could be done quickly. We, we could have this improved in six months for sure.
I'll give my comments. So first, thank you for the work that you put into this. One of the, I, I will say, though, I'm somewhat concerned about the survey results. I have a feeling, and this is a feeling based on no analytical data, but a feeling that this, that us not capturing some more demographic information from the students was a mistake. When I think about the type of student who would probably interact with the city survey, is probably not the same type of student who is experiencing issues, right? Like, I don't think that those populations are the same, especially when what you gathered in data is largely a lot different than what we have gathered in community-wide surveys that are statistically valid, such as the Riley County Community Needs Assessment, that lists things like affordable and quality housing as two of the main issues in Manhattan. So I have a little bit of an, an issue with that. The tenants, I mean, the landlords, I think gathering the fact of the demographic information in terms of them, that is the most important, was how many properties they owned. So I think that makes that, makes me feel like that's a little bit more valid, although some of the questions, I think, what's my incentive to answer that honestly? Like, if I'm a landlord, why am I going to tell you that 50% of the time I don't give my rental deposit back? Like, I don't really think that there's a reason to do that. So it, not to say that I don't appreciate your work, but there is part of it that I just have hesitation putting a lot of weight into. With that being said, I am fully supportive of the advisory committee. To Commissioner Butler's point, I'd want to see it changed a little bit, right? I'm a renter, and I couldn't be on this committee the way it's laid out currently. 60%, at least 60% of the community is renters, and, but K-State students don't make up 60% of our population, so that needs to be a little bit more spread out. But otherwise, the main idea of it, I think, is great. The only concern as I have is, this adds a level of bureaucracy and adds another place where the city commission is getting recommended to do things that we have largely been recommended to do for the last two years, no longer than that, that we've taken zero action on. So things like the proposal you just, you all just made, I'm not sure how you presented it differently than I did, but again, I presented this a year and a half ago, and suddenly everybody's on board with it, which is a little bit disappointing to me, because to Commissioner Butler's point, this is actually, we could have taken a long time ago to fix. SGA passed a resolution for a rental inspection, and we, as a commission, have yet to even have a conversation on the dais about a rental inspection. I would, I would rather that die in an up-and-down vote than allow commissioners to avoid the topic, so that they can continue to go around town saying they support quality housing and fixing the quality housing issue without taking any action. A year after proposing, hey, we should probably include in leases, if you live in a floodplain after the Labor Day floods, when so many people were displaced from their rental housing and had no idea that they lived in a floodplain, we have yet to take any action on that. And that, to me, is, in my two years as a commissioner, the most disappointing aspect of it, is that we have had low-hanging fruit in terms of these issues that we could have acted on, that was a compromised position, and yet it has taken us this long to get here. And I find that incredibly disappointing. So we need to do better. And that, that's not to you, that's to us, we need to do better. Because we have been told that these were issues for more than, much longer than I've been on the commission, and we've done a little about it. So I appreciate the work that you've done in this, I'm supportive of the advisory committee, I'm 100% supportive of including an addendum in a lease to at least tell them about our rental, our rental registration program that we have currently and the rights that you have as a tenant. I'd also like us, at the same time, to explore the floodzone issue that we talked about forever ago and still have not taken any action on. And then I'm still not going to allow the rental, rental inspection program to dial, continue to ask for that until the day I'm not a commissioner anymore, and probably I'll email you all after I'm done being a commissioner and bother you about it. I think at the very least, we owe it to the public to have a vote on that, so that your positions are made more clear, because I think right now, we've allowed ourselves to be a little bit of a scapegoat by not taking hard votes, and that's what Congress does, that's not what city commissioners do. So I would hope that we would take a vote on that as well, but thank you for all the work that you did.
I want to comment one on the, on the hard vote, you know, I've been here since 2011, we've had two hard votes on it. You know, one, we threw it out, we had it, we threw it out. And then secondly, when it came up again, we created this rental registration program in lieu of, of the thing, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of, you know, rental inspection, and probably never will be unless, as this program goes forward and we make these little changes, that the Code Office gets overwhelmed with people calling in, and, and we find valid complaints, and then there would be a justification for doing it. And then the other thing that I've always said about this is, you know, the state passed a state law which basically makes it illegal to do a rental inspection program, and that, to me, was, you know, one of the other reasons not to discuss it, even though Lawrence tried to circumvent it with administrative warrants, which, which I think is nonsense. And so, and it has some Fourth Amendment issues that I've mentioned, and so, so I think we have had an up or down vote, just not in your tenure, which, which I understand is frustrating.
Yes, I have three children that are still renting, and I have one in New York, one in Indianapolis, and one in Los Angeles. And I observe the way they found their rental spaces, and you're absolutely right, it's on websites. So when they moved, they usually pick a, a place within three to six months before they actually locate to the place. And oftentimes, at least for two of them, either my husband or myself physically went and looked at all of the places and vetted them and saw how they were. And they look great on the websites, and when you go there, you realize, oh, it's smaller than we thought, or it doesn't have a window, or whatever it is, but not so much as the codes, you, you know, think they're taken. One of my children never used me or my husband for, to go and look at it, he just looked on Craigslist, filled out the sheets, moved into it, never even looked at it. So I think that's how most people these days work. It's interesting to me how this generation is so trusting of everybody. Uber drivers are a perfect example, Airbnb is a perfect example, you just assume it's going to be great and you move on in, and I think that's how Craigslist works, and probably even rental properties, even houses are bought that way this, this time around, and cars. So I'm not shocked that that's how it goes. I do like the proposals you presented this evening, I think those are great solutions. One of the things I was disappointed with was the staff person for off-campus housing, just having 10 hours, and even then, you don't know how long they're going to be there because they also have all of those other responsibilities. That's a lot of responsibility for one individual for 10 hours to take care of. I don't know how you can find a solution or even help provide resources. So I think that's something maybe the city and university can work on. Maybe, I know it comes out of your privilege fees, and you said, you know, they were thinking about raising the hours, but you would have to pay for it as students, and I don't think that's fair either, especially if we're discussing off-campus housing. So that's a possibility, maybe raise it to part-time or even full-time, to see what kind of problems or issues there are, and then there won't be this retaliation piece, there would be a mid, middle person involved, and they would be more open to discussion as opposed to a city official or a different type of official, let's say. So I think that's something we should look at, although you didn't present it this evening, it came up in our town gown conversations. I do like the tenant, landlord-tenant advisory committee, the makeup might need to look a little different, it looks like a lot of people on there, but you want to have someone, some people that are consistently there that can advocate on both sides, and having somebody from, that's the off-campus student housing, should probably be part of that group as well, as well. The addition to the lease, I think, is a great idea, I think that's a, that's a no-brainer, that's something we can do, and given the process of, yes, you can actually file a complaint, and we are, I've heard some people say, "Well, I filed a complaint, but the city doesn't do anything about it." If that's the case, they need to let us know, because oftentimes, we react, as some of the city commissioners, when we get emails, we try to pass it on to our city staff to handle it. So I don't know if there was a, if that was happening or not. So we would like to have more information, but definitely let them know they can email us, call us, whatever, whatever we need to put into the lease for that. I don't know how we would do the websites, I really don't know. Because even I know when I go to a Because even I know, when I go to a different place and I look for a place to eat, I just Google it, you know? You know, Italian food, Mexican food, whatever it is, and you just go. You don't really read all of the other stuff that's there, and that's how we kind of seek out a place to live. So I don't know how to improve that, except word-of-mouth is what most people use. I know when my daughter was moving into housing in Indianapolis, she spoke to other residents that had used some of their housing, and that, that's what we used for it. The websites don't really tell you a lot, because even if it's Yelp or anything, it's, it's very biased, you know? And people can also delete some of those things. So that's something that I don't feel we would have nearly as much control as we would like to, but these other ones, we do have control. And when you're in the city of Manhattan, you should feel like you have safe housing, regardless of your income, age, ability, whatever it is. That's something that falls on us to take care of, and I think that's what we've always tried to instill in our community, is that when you're in Manhattan, you're safe, whether it's with police enforcement code, enforcement, city official, whatever it is. And I believe Kansas State University has the same philosophy. And in that, we can work together, how to make it better. But I, I do like the tangible items you brought forward, that we can actually implement right away. And I don't know what the discussion would look like when we do budgets, but I think it's imperative we have that discussion, to see what the city can also do to supplement what student privilege fees are doing for your, for your, go-between for off-campus housing.
I was going to mention something on the student fees. You know, you have the City University Fund, and the university makes recommendations. And while a lot of that was spent on North Campus quarter, there's still a piece of it there, and so that's something you have control of. That would be making a recommendation to use that to supplement that. And I know that's operation cost, and some people don't like that, but it is a source of revenue, conceivably.
The Fort Riley and our two public housing units and the tax credit entities here in this community do require rental inspection before a soldier's family can even move in. And the public housing even has their own inspectors, so they have to satisfy them. So I have felt that it is not that onerous to, to have a rental inspection program here in this community. We, we don't have anyone really looking after the quality of housing that students end up with. We pay lip service to it, oh, look at our web, or go to Craigslist, or 10 hours, or, yeah, we've, you know, lip service is what we do. I was an advocate, and I was happy to be reminded, Dennis, that it was July the 1st of 2017 when we started the rental registration system, so it's been almost two and a half years. And except for this latest spurt of activity, we haven't done a lot over the years with regard to trying to improve that quality and, and make sure that happens. So I will continue to be an advocate for rental inspection. I think it's the least we can do. I don't advocate an extensive one, but I believe there are some certain, like 10 or 15 basic issues that should be on the criteria that we require. So the rental registration system, the city has accommodated without charging any, without a charge to anyone. And we've done it based on a webs, a web program that the landlord goes in and sets up the account and indicates the rentals and the addresses that they have. And that has, I think, proved, I think there are some problems with it. Self-entry of data with a vested interest, but for the most part, I think it does work. And I'm glad to say that, but I don't think, I think that the problems we had two and a half years ago, we still have now. Some of those same buildings, there's never been a code inspector in them. And so it, it's, it's just, it's frustrating not to be able to improve and have everybody say, oh, I'm trying. What are you doing? What have you done? And so I agree, of course, I would agree to add addendums to leases and the Landlord-Tenant Act, and I think that a lot of, some of the bigger landlords already do that. They put a link to the Landlord-Tenant Act on their website. I'm not sure it's those landlords that are the problem, if they're being that upfront. They would not be encouraging their tenants. You would not be, your landlords would not probably fess up that there are seven people living in the, in the unit and the dwelling. And so it's, it's not that strong an effort, is what I'm seeing. I generally support your proposal for an advisory committee. I do agree that we would need to make it community-wide and not student-centered specifically, which gets back to the broad coverage for the community of the rental registration system. But it is, it would be, it would be doing something. And I appreciated Jared raising the issue of the Labor Day flood last year, and what we've have and haven't been, we've had a study group going for a year, but we still haven't taken, we've done the things we can do with regard to buying out some properties and changing some of the regulations, insulating some of our city infrastructure from flood. But it's hard to, I would like to see us be more assertive or aggressive with regard to improving the quality of the, of the residents who wander in. It's like wandering into a bad landlord situation. You wander into some of these situations that flood, and you're, you know, it's, you're the one that's disadvantaged, not the rest of the city. Everybody comes in and races in and says, oh, let me help you. But the best help they could have been was in the beginning by not allowing your, you to have a, to live, have to live in a place that floods. And the floods are becoming increasingly higher. So just off of that, I, those are, those are my, I don't know what you're after, Dennis. My concern about the renter survey is that it's so few, 143 renters. And it's hard to, for me to really buy in, in a strong way, to that data. It's, it's a superficial look and, and really does say we need to look further and dig in further, so.
So real quick, to be clear, two commissioners have said that they are supportive of exploring a rental inspection program. So there's not a third commissioner that's supportive of doing that.
Jared, I'm interested in a rental inspection program. I'm, I'm really tired of being scolded over this issue. I think we're moving at the rate that we can, and as far as a mandatory inspection, every time we bring, what we have right now, if I asked Katie, right now, can we do mandatory inspection, what are you going to say?
Yes.
The same thing that she's been saying for a year and a half.
Isn't that what we've been doing? Isn't, I thought you kept saying we can't do it because of the law or something, or we already have it in place?
No, our, my advice has been consistent on it, that there is a law, and it has requirements that we must follow. And those requirements are that you cannot adopt a periodic mandatory, periodic interior rental inspection program unless you have obtained tenant consent, and, which is the Fourth Amendment.
Is that not what we're doing now, when we say have an addendum?
No, they're separate, that, this law is pertaining to a mandatory periodic rental inspection program only. A, a program in which somebody can call and opt in, that is not what this is talking about. It's about an ordinance like what Lawrence has. An ordinance's law complies with the state law, which permits it, if you meet the requirements.
Every time I brought it up, I kept, when I would talk to staff, I kept hearing, we have something like Lawrence has, is what I kept hearing.
Before we did, I guess I'm not sure who's, I mean, I've, we've, the legal department sent out three or four memos and emails that are, I mean, I copy and paste it almost every time. So the, it's, I don't, I'm not sure what else.
Then maybe I'm misunderstanding something, because I, I kept thinking this rule about you can't go in without consent and it has to be signed is what I thought we, we had. Or is that not what we have at all? That by, by complaint is the only way we can go in and get something?
No, no, I mean, the, the issue is, what the law requires now, regardless of if you have a rental inspection ordinance or not, is that in order to enter someone's property, you have to have consent of that person. You have to, they have to voluntarily consent. This is the Fourth Amendment. Or you have to have a warrant. And the warrant can be a search warrant or an administrative warrant. And an administrative warrant is a low bar for, for the city, if the city has an inspection program in place. And by inspection, I don't mean a rental inspection, I mean, like, a building codes, a building codes.
Talking about a rental inspection, so I guess I was misunderstanding the whole time about what we had and what we could and could not do. I think maybe that I wasn't as clear.
Currently, anyone can ask for an inspection.
Yes, if that person has the ability to give consent for the code inspector to enter the property, absolutely, because consent always allows for that inspection, always.
The hurdle to jump over, if we adopted the resident, the ordinance that you say, has always been, they do not have to comply. In other words, they have to consent to have their, the owner has to consent.
No.
The tenant has to consent.
Or the, or the occupant has to consent.
Yes, that's what the law, yes.
To allow you entry to do the inspection.
Yes, and, and Lawrence, as part of this program, requires, they work with occupants to get that consent signed as part of their process. And sometimes, they do have the landlords obtain that consent. But Lawrence doesn't enter the properties without, if they're unable to maintain, or to obtain consent through their licensing process, they obtain an administrative warrant when they have the ability to do so. They don't do that very often, that's very rare, because you have, they're not pursuing it that way. And Brad had looked into it a lot and had a lot of information about how they're actually implementing it, but from a legal, technical perspective, the way their program is set up is they require mandatory interior periodic inspections, they have a license, that they, they will only enter a property if they get signed consent. If they don't obtain, but that's always been in our, I mean, that's always been an aspect of all of our programs. If someone resists consent, then our only alternative is to seek an administrative warrant. You use the existence of that rental inspection program to support your administrative warrant request. But that has to be reviewed by a district court judge, and the district court judge will make sure that the facts are there and that the law is there to support admitting the government to that property. But that's, Lawrence has had that in place, that's, that, so there is a way to do a mandatory periodic rental inspection program that complies with the state law. That law doesn't prohibit the program, it puts parameters on the program. Those parameters, frankly, in application, are no different from what an administrative warrant required to begin with, the law that was in effect before then. It just ensures that the city adopts an ordinance that follows those parameters, which, which is how Lawrence is able to maintain its rental inspection program.
The consent piece is what I thought we are, that, that's all we really needed, was the consent from the tenant.
And we, we do that, we do that. When, when we get a call, we have a form that the tenant signs, so we have a written consent from that occupant to support our entry into the structure.
Right, that's why I thought we had that already.
We, we do for all the voluntary inspections, of course, yes. We, we do get a record of that, to make sure that we don't have an issue where we've entered someone's property. I mean, it's just, it's to ensure that everyone understands what we're doing and why we're there, and the tenant signs it and says, yeah, I'm welcoming you into my property for this purpose.
I thought it was the, I'm sorry, I thought, because, then I may have misunderstood, because my understanding was that what we have right now is very similar to what Lawrence has, in that we needed consent to go in, we can't just go in. Before, we used to be able to do that, before we repealed it.
Well.
We still need consent, but right now, the difference is, a tenant has to call in order to get an inspection. In Lawrence's case, it runs on a timeline, every, I believe it's three years, is what was included in my proposal that I gave to the city commission. And so essentially, just schedules out those inspections. You still need consent from the tenant in order to enter the property.
And they obtain, they typically obtain that, when we, when we talked to them a couple years ago, they typically obtain that as part of the licensing process, so that they have that lined up. But if they aren't able to obtain it, then they go, they go to the, they, meaning Lawrence, goes to the tenant and works that out. So, but they're on a cycle, like you said, so they're not in those properties, but every so often. The other thing that they told us before, that Scott might remember, is they actually try to schedule those periodic inspections when the vacancies are there, so that they're not having the, you know, a violation of someone's actual residence. And in addition, they only do a certain percentage of every property owner's properties they own, and that property owner can select the ones that they want inspected, which the result of that is, they're able to kind of self-select, well, here's a group of tenants who are either cooperative and will consent, so we don't have the issue, or the properties are vacant, so you don't have a consent issue, because there's no occupant.
I remember that discussion. I remember all of those discussions. I remember the price tag that was going to go in, I remember the units, I remember all of that. And I also remember thinking, at least, like, maybe I'm wrong, was, when they said it, we have something very similar to Lawrence's, is that you still need that signature. You still need a signature from the tenant before you go in.
You mean, in terms of Lawrence, they do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, as well as we do.
Yeah, either way, you would need a signature.
Sure.
So to me, I felt like we had something very similar. We didn't have the annual thing, and we didn't have the fees, because we still wanted it to be somewhat sustainable across the board.
Their, their framework is different. It's a license, it's a rental license, and they have requirements under that license program, and we don't have that. So in that way, that framework isn't, isn't similar, but in the way that, yes, tenant consent, we obtain it, and they obtain it. Both of us have to do that.
Yeah, if, if that's all that's necessary, yeah, I don't mind. I thought that's what we had, where we can.
And I just want to say, I apologize if me pushing has ever come off as scolding, but I ran on affordable and quality housing, and so it's my job to advocate for the people who elected me into this position. So I will hold you accountable, and I'll continue to hold elected officials accountable. And I'm sorry if that makes you feel bad, but at the end of the day, we have a large major, we have a, what I consider a majority of our population advocating for rental inspections, and it's something that we should consider at least up here at the dais. And from what I've heard, you now have three commissioners that would be willing to explore at least what Lawrence has.
I want to make one comment after, you know, because Katie explained it. And basically, Lawrence has a very ineffectual program, and I wouldn't compare ours to Lawrence. Our inspection program is far superior to what Lawrence has, because Lawrence has got so many loopholes in it, it's ridiculous. And I had long discussions with the code office as we looked at that, and I wouldn't want to be associated with anything even close to that. And I, I think the program we has, that we have, is effective. And while the survey doesn't have a lot of numbers there, it, it is, it is getting the job done. And we make a couple of tweaks to the registration program, it will do even better. But, but if anybody thinks that, you know, we should model our program after Lawrence, that's completely, that's complete lunacy in my mind. And anybody that thinks Lawrence's program is effective is making another huge mistake, because it is not.
Lawrence's program inspects more properties than we do, period, by far. They catch more issues than we do, by far, period. So it's at least worth exploring. And just Lawrence's program as a model, it doesn't mean that that's what we have to do. I actually would have no problems making ours a little bit more assertive on the amount of properties we expect, but I think that's going to be a debate that the commission can have when we talk about rental inspections. And like I said, it looks like we have an agreeance to have that conversation.
I heard Jared ask, how many commissioners supported having an advisory council?
No, rental inspection.
It was rental inspection.
I said rental inspection, yeah.
Okay, apologize.
No, no, it's okay.
Well, we appreciate you coming, both of you, and helping, working so closely with Dennis on this. I mean, this, as you've heard, has, has a long history, going back probably at least 11 or 12 years. So we've made a little bit of progress. We had rental inspection before, it was terminated, and then we worked it back to where we have it now. But I really appreciate you coming back here as now, I know you're a senior, are, are you a senior too?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore. I mean, can you imagine, I've been trying to imagine myself when I was a sophomore, coming up here and having this degree of facility, talking back and forth with, with all of us. So we really appreciate that, appreciate the work you're doing out there. I think this just demonstrates the involvement of not only you, but you with the, with the city, so it's a great thing that we have here. So if there are no other comments, I don't think there's any other business before the, what? Oh, sorry. Any, thank you again.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Any public comment? All right. Well, thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.